Okay, we will be open. And I do have a form, and Kevin, could you lead us in the pledge?
Congratulations to the flag. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just wait a moment, Carlene's just entering the building. All right, first order of business will be approval of the minutes of May 13, 2025. Take a moment to look those over and see if there's any additions, corrections that need to be done. Any additions or corrections anyone have? There are none, all in favor?
I see.
Oh, I'm sorry, we got to do the motion for us. Could I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
All right, so Ella, seconded by Kevin. Now we can all vote. All in favor of approval of the minutes of May 13?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Okay, turn it over to the superintendent for the recognition awards.
We're going to start with, the key is me, Kat Russo. She here? Kat, come on up. Hi, Kat. Come on, okay? Okay, the key is me, Kat Russo. This was, she was nominated by Megan Nianovich as a school psychologist at Moriarty. Kat stepped into her role as Moriarty's full-time counselor this year, and from day one has brought energy, vision, and heart to her role and turned it into something extraordinary. Kat is deeply committed to building meaningful relationships with students. She set a personal goal to meet every student in our school this year, and she has already hosted over 250 students in her popular lunch bunch groups. Her student mailbox is often overflowing with requests, and yet she makes time to follow up with each and every child. The connection she builds is not superficial. It is intentional, lasting, and rooted in mutual respect. Her sense of humor, her quirky charm, including her now-famous chicken nugget necklace, and her genuine belief in every child make her a beacon of positivity in our buildings. Kat is a true model of what a school counselor can and should be. And I will tell you that I was at Moriarty for the 50th, thank you Greg Velasquez, is he here? The 50th, there you are.
16.
50th, what was it called? For the 50th annual, not annual.
Anniversary, birthday celebration.
Thank you. And Kat came out in her rollerblades. And she did, I was grateful that she had on her knee pads and elbow pads. I did say that I wasn't paying workman's comp if she got injured, so. So Kat, thank you for all you do to the Swedish students and for the staff at Moriarty. Congratulations. All right, next. I Make a Difference, Michelle McCracken. Come on up. I Make a Difference, Michelle McCracken. She's a paraeducator at Stanton School. She was nominated by Anna Ino, who is also a paraeducator in the Stride Classroom. Michelle is the most kind-hearted person I have ever met. As a new employee, she was very welcoming and accessible to me. She made me feel very supported in my new role at Stanton School. And then Kelly Campbell, who is the special education teacher, right there, she is in the back. Michelle works with our most vulnerable students. What sets Michelle apart is the care and thoughtfulness she brings to everything she does. Michelle creates a classroom where every student feels safe, supported, and valued. Her kindness, patience, and dedication have a lasting impact on our students and our classroom community. She is a true team player and an essential part of our Stride program. We have our Director of IT working on it right now. That was for you, Michelle. Next, we have You Inspire Me. Can Xavier Chin come on up so I can give this to him? You Inspire Me, June 2025, Xavier Chin. Nominated by Principal Mark Huntington School. Where's Principal Mark? Would you like to come up too? Come on up, Zach. We would like to nominate Xavier Chin for the You Inspire Me Award. Xavier is a fourth-grade student in Mrs. Russo's class, and he exemplifies what it means to be a well-rounded student. At Huntington, our school values are known as PAWS. Practice positivity, act responsible, work hard, and stay safe. Xavier does this each and every day and serves as a role model for his classmates. As a friend and older brother, Xavier often takes a leadership role in his interactions with peers and strives to make the right choice as well as inspire his classmates to be the same. When faced with a challenge, Xavier never hesitates to make the right choice, even if it isn't a popular one. We are so proud of Xavier and all his accomplishments and can't wait to see what he does in the future. All right, these are always the longest write-ups, these nominations for our Volunteer of the Month, which I think is awesome. So our June Volunteer of the Month, and this person doesn't even know it. She's here and she doesn't know that she's being nominated. Yelena Brooks, come on up. Your mom told me I wasn't allowed to say anything, so. Yelena is a warm, familiar presence at many of our schools and district events, always showing up with a smile and generous spirit. She never hesitates to step up, whether it's a school fair, community event, or district-wide celebration. Yelena is always there, ready to lend a hand and bring her unique warmth to every moment. Her dedication is unmatched. She shows up to every single event with genuine enthusiasm and a can-do attitude. What truly sets her apart is the joy she brings to children. Her face painting isn't just an activity, it's a magical experience that lights up every child's face and creates cherished memories. She takes the time to make each child feel special, turning simple moments into unforgettable ones. Yelena's presence uplifts everyone around her. Her kindness, reliability, and passion for giving back inspire not only the children she serves, but also her fellow volunteers and staff. She just doesn't volunteer, she makes a difference, and her impact is felt across the entire district. And she was nominated by Nellie, who is our Teen Outreach and Extended Learning Program Coordinator at Kelly. So congratulations. All right, we have our retirement recognition, as you can tell by the crowd out here. The first person I'm going to read is Lou Allen, who is, actually, I'll leave Lou, because Lou, you're not here, we thought you might show up. Like, you said no, but you never know Lou Allen. So he's not here, okay, we'll do Lou last. Wendy McLaughlin, come on up. They surprised Wendy, if anybody was not at our Kelly Middle School promotion today. They surprised Wendy with a really nice giveaway, so that was really nice. Brandy, where's Brandy? Is Brandy here? Wendy began her journey as an elementary teacher at Moriarty School almost 39 years ago. And she did tell me that one of her teachers was Mr. Iovino.
Oh, thank you.
Her passion for science soon led her to Teacher's Memorial, where she inspired countless eighth graders. Continuing her dedication to teaching science, she moved to Kelly Middle School, where she remains a beloved and inspiring eighth-grade science teacher, shaping curious minds with enthusiasm and kindness every day. Congratulations, Wendy. All right, next is Robert Maleski, our PE teacher at Uncas. Robert here? He's with Lou Allen somewhere, okay. Cheryl Shidow, come on up. I'm looking at the ears, did you have Mr. Iovino too? Cheryl is retiring from the district after 38 years in education. She is the current music teacher at Mahan School, having begun her journey in the fall of 1988. As a long-term substitute, I fooled you. In January of 1988, she was hired as a music teacher at Teacher's Memorial. Over the years, her passion for music education has also taken her to Stanton, Huntington, Uncas, Vets, Greenville, Funky, Buckingham, and Wequonic Schools, where she has inspired countless students with her love of music. Congratulations. Patricia Luon? You go by Trish.
And I had Mr. Iovino.
Trish is retiring from the district after inspiring 19 years, 19 years of dedicated service as a paraeducator. Throughout her career, she has been a steadfast champion for students, first as a Read 180 paraeducator at Teacher's Memorial. What was that? That's why I was wondering what it was, okay. And for the remainder of her time, a special education resource paraeducator at Mahan School. Her commitment has truly made a lasting difference in the lives she's touched. Congratulations. Nancy Tanway, are you here? Nancy?
Hi, Nancy.
How are you?
Nancy is retiring from her position as the school nurse at Wequonic School, where is Sarah Dusso, Principal Dusso, at Wequonic School after working in the district for the past three years. She has nearly 30 years of nursing experience. Her extensive background in healthcare has been a valuable asset to our school community, ensuring that students receive knowledgeable and compassionate care each day. Congratulations. I think that's everyone, and now I want to say a little thing about Lou Allen, who couldn't make it here today. As you know, Lou Allen came about four years ago after being a principal and a lot of other roles in New London. I actually met Lou Allen on the sidelines. I used to do, I used to collect all the stats in Eastline on the football, and that's where I met Lou Allen, on the sidelines, originally 25 years ago. So Lou Allen is retiring after serving in the district as athletic director for the past four years. During his tenure, he successfully reestablished the district's athletic program, participation in fostering a renewed sense of community pride. Over his impressive 49-year career in education... He has been a dedicated mentor, leader, and advocate for students, leaving a lasting impact on countless lives. His commitment and passion will be deeply missed by college students and the community alike. And I also want to read, Jamie Bender actually sent me something too, she couldn't be here today. She said, this is from Jamie, "Tonight, we bid a heartfelt farewell to our incredible athletic director Lou Allen, whose leadership has reignited our middle school sports program and changed the trajectory of our students and our community to once again celebrate our student athletes. He has shaped not just our sports programs, but the character of countless students. Your unweaverin' commitment to excellence, sportsmanship, and student growth has left a lasting legacy, 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 can't even talk right now, in our school community. From organizing sports seasons to mentoring young athletes and coaches alike, your impact has gone far beyond the playing fields. You've been a steady presence, a source of inspiration, and a champion for every student who wore a jersey. As you step into retirement, again, know that your influence will continue to echo through the halls and parts of this school. You've taught us that success isn't just measured in wins, but in teamwork, perseverance, and integrity. Thank you for the years of dedication, the long nights, the pep talks, and the belief in every single student's potential. We wish you nothing but joy, relaxation, and new adventures in your next chapter. You've more than earned it." So thank you, everyone.
Next on our list are middle school happenings. So if the representatives from Kelly and Teachers could come up?
I guess I'm the happening tonight.
I guess I'm.
We thought this was going to happen maybe sometimes. Well, we just had a promotion ceremony yesterday, today, outstanding job by our students. Great job recognizing 150 kids from Teacher's Memorial yesterday. A lot of friends and families, it was an awesome experience for our kids. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, we were saying, we had two ceremonies today, A Team and B Team. It was well-attended, the students were really, really excited and happy. Had some great performances as well. Thank you for attending. And we're just really excited to see their next steps of success.
I wasn't expecting this, it was just great, thank you.
Well, we weren't expecting this either, we were talking to others, so you know, like, I don't know. So I mean, I guess if you want a little bit more information, let's see, let's see, Global this year, Teacher's Memorial, we've improved our daily attendance rate from 77% to 92.2%. Chronic absenteeism rate has gone down by 14% from last year. We've seen gains both in, I was just working on my end-of-year evaluation, so I know. But we've seen gains both in our SPEC scores through all three cohorts. We have some major gains with our, our Science and GSS scores this year, which we're very proud of in the work we've been doing, commitment for next year.
I'm not just doing my end-of-year this morning. We have our daily attendances currently, it was about 93%. Our chronic absenteeism increased by just a little bit, but not as big of gains as I think that we were anticipating. And with the new IXL program, we are seeing our students making great gains and lots of burp and breathing masks.
And just tell them, come on, you beat us in the kebab, which...
We did.
I still think our food was better, Bob, I'm sorry. We make kebabs, they make cheeseburgers, you tell me what you want to eat, bud. That's what we got for you.
Well, we'll say that, we all voted, and Ed, just like he should, voted for Teacher's Memorial, Global. Everyone else voted for Kelly, but you voted for UCF.
So what's up next here besides getting taped on the wall? What do you got?
Who knows, I've gotten hit with water balloons, I've been hit with whipped cream, I don't know. You know, we have some people sleep on roofs, who knows what's next? Maybe I'll jump, maybe I'll jump out of a plane, I don't know. You never know.
Tough competition going on.
Yeah, well, we tried, we have to have friendly competition.
Well, I attended the Wequonic graduation this afternoon, and Sarah, Sarah in the room?
Yeah.
It was what, 52 you had for perfect attendance?
51.
51.
61.
They get, not a water balloon, but they get the slime her. What even sent it?
I don't know about slime, we'll see. Maybe a Dante next year.
I'll go Dante.
I heard that, I guess, in the minutes.
It is now in the minutes.
Way too young. Yes, all right, we'll take a five-minute recess for photos out in the hall. The tirees also, and the principals, whoever you want to leave, that's fine. Thank you all for, next item is the presentation by UCFS.
I gotta restart this computer, it's not working right.
So we're not on YouTube right now?
No, it's been acting up the whole time, sorry.
Yeah, that's Lou. I understand.
Oh, okay, I thought you... Okay, I think you're a different language. I was like, I...
Mark said, under the budget, instead of smiling, everybody. The pressure's not on her.
So, good evening, everyone. Oops.
That's all right, comfortable. I'll have to figure it out tomorrow.
All right, go ahead.
He was here and that was gone. Is that Anna?
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Cara Waska, and I am the Chief Operating Officer at United Community and Family Services. And I'm here today to talk to you about our school-based health centers. It really is a great PowerPoint, but it is going to probably not cooperate, it seems like, so. And one thing where we are at UCFS is flexible, so I will, if you listen carefully, I will tell you what I'm about to present to you today.
It's going to be one of those nights.
It's going to be one of those nights. I'd rather just stand, it would probably be easier. Usually, you know, I'm known for doing Friday karaoke at UCFS, so I won't sing to you tonight, so. So UCFS, we are a community health center, we're a federally qualified health center. We have been in this community for 145 years. We were founded in 1877, and we provide medical, dental, behavioral health services at five locations throughout southeastern and eastern Connecticut, and 10 school-based health centers. And what I'm going to talk to you tonight about is our partnership with North Public Schools, with Superintendent Lesser, and that started in January of 2017. Prior to UCFS coming into school-based health centers, Child and Family had been providing those services to you. Actually, a little history, when I started 18 years ago at UCFS, UCFS provided the social workers, and Child and Family provided the medical. And through the years, we've stayed in touch, but, so when Child and Family made the decision that they weren't going to be able to continue services due to some decreased funding from the Department of Public Health, they came to us, we partnered with your then-superintendent, Abby Dolber, and began to collaborate on how we could reopen these centers and bring them back to your schools. We started with behavioral health, and we've continued to expand over the years. I'm happy to say that in the last three years, additional grant fundings, now we have close to $700,000 of grant funding that we've been able to put into our school-based health centers here at North Public Schools through the School-Based Health Alliance. And that was some federal, some funding that came through the legislature, and we were, we were pleased to partner with you to continue to expand services. So today, in the three centers that I'm going to talk about, we provide all of our services, we provide medical services, dental services, behavioral health services, and to any North Public School student who is enrolled, regardless of whether they go to that particular school. What's really great about our center here at Kelly Middle is that we do have a separate entrance, and so we see a lot of those kids, especially the beginning of the year, or as we do physicals and entry, school entry exams, so that we can get the kids into the classroom as soon as possible. Oh, there we go. So today, we have close to 1,000 students who are enrolled in the school-based health centers across North Public Schools. All right, so, I was wondering, what is a school-based health center? So, a school-based health center is essentially your primary care, your pediatrician, your behavioral health counselor, or your dentist in your school. Okay, so we provide those services that are provided by the pediatrician and assistants, and I guess, and behavioral health physicians. We can do annual visits, we can do sport or physicals, we can do school physicals, immunizations, sick visits and dental cleanings, behavioral assessments, and counseling services. So, it's really great for parents. I am a parent of a 23-year-old who went through these hallways, and then I went on to NFA, and it was able to take and begin of the school-based health centers. I didn't have to leave work, she was able to go get a flu shot there, she was able to get a sick visit, and it was really convenient. And what happens is, you can still stay with your regular pediatrician. What we do is we send notes to them and let them know, you know, Cara was in the school-based health center today, we gave her, you know, some ear drops, and, you know, she'll follow up with you. So, we do have a number of students who also, we at UCFS, because we have our large pediatric practice, they are also seen at our health center at 47 Town Street, which also, you know, provides a nice continuity of care. The great thing, and since I'm talking to the Board of Education, and I know that you're probably, as I am in my role, interested in costs and budgets, the services are at no cost to the school. The services are paid for based on the student's health insurance or our sliding fee scale. So we provide services regardless of ability to pay, it's an income-based and family-sized scale, which we then, that we then provide. We don't collect fees, obviously, from the students, we send those bills home to the parents if they are on a sliding fee. But I have a team who work really hard to, if families are not insured, to get them insured, including, you know, our families who may be a little bit more apprehensive in getting, in getting insured. And we have a family engagement specialist who also can go out to the home and get forms filled out and things like that. So we do our best to try to get the families connected to the services that they need. So, we are located at Seaton, in the elementary school. And in this past school year through May 30th, we saw 25 students with 40 visits, and 37 behavioral health patients, and 390 visits. So for a total of 61 students that were served at Seaton. One of the things that we found was interesting is that the middle schoolers actually use the primary care services a little bit more than... the primary care services a little bit more than, than the younger students, which, you know, makes sense, you know, as if you're a parent of a younger child, you might, you, you are more wanting to be there for that child if they're going to the doctor. So, we've actually been able to make some adjustments so that we have those services where the demand is greater. So if you see at Teachers, we are at Teachers as well, and we saw close to eighty students. And behavioral health, we saw thirty-two students. Those, the behavioral health services are usually a little bit longer length of time, which is why there's, you know, they, they are seen more often, but less students. So for close to a hundred students being seen at the Teachers. And then finally, Kelly, where we have a full-time family practice provider, providing five days a week now of medical care, she saw two hundred and thirty-nine patients through the end of May. And in behavioral health, we have a full-time clinician, we have a full-time clinician at each of those schools as well, but the clinician there was able to see fifty-one students for a total of two hundred and eighty students being served. Alright, so I wanna just highlight a really great partnership that was really successful this year. So, we partner every year with Laura Dietrich, your Director of Nursing, and all the school nurses across the district, because we know that immunizations and adherence to immunizations is a really, a really big goal, right? To make sure that all of our kids are immunized and that they're ready to learn and ask for. So, every year, that, that can be a struggle, and, you know, especially with the mandates around flu vaccines and things, and despite, you know, lots of communication back and forth with parents and nurses and, and our staff, you know, in, in past years, the compliance has been over a hundred students that were not in compliant with those immunization rules. And I recently met with the team and I was pleased to hear from Laura that in this school year of twenty-twenty-five, we have less than fifteen, although last week I was told it was five, so it's, it's continued. At the time of making this PowerPoint, it was less than fifteen. So, and I said to Laura and I said to my team, I said, what do you, what do you equate that with, you know, why do you think that that is, that we've made such a big difference this year? And she said, you know, it's the, it's the constant communication, it's the collaboration. Laura and the nurses all know that they can contact our, our provider and our medical assistant and get those kids in to get those immunizations. So, you know, it's really a great example of how we've been able to partner and, and make a real, you know, solid outcome difference, you know, for, for you and your students. The other thing I wanna just highlight is some supplemental funding that we also partnered with you on to receive. It was focused on food insecurity, this was also from the School-Based Health Alliance. They, as, you know, sometimes happens, they had some additional funds, they, we wrote a grant last fall, they told us February seventeenth that we were gonna get forty-one thousand dollars, and they said, but here's the caveat, you have to spend it by May ninth. Thank you very much. But we rallied and to kick off spring break, April fourteenth, we had a event with drive-through event to provide distribution of non-perishable foods, perishable foods, ground wheat, potatoes, carrots, and hygiene products as well. So that was at Stanton on April fourteenth, and we had many, many students, over a hundred and fifty bags were given out, and, as well as we were able to provide, along, since then we have been able to provide food gift cards to families who are in need as well. So, it was great to see all of that, you know, come to fruition and be able to get the, those needs met. So just a few testimonials from, you know, the families, I, I won't read them to you because you can see them, but, you know, going above and beyond to help multiple families in the communities facing similar, if not worse, circumstances. We know that food insecurity is really a crisis in our community, and, you know, we were, we were, we were pleased to be able to partner with you to be able to get those, that food out to families and to continue to help them along the way. So, that was a great success. So, any questions? Yes?
Yes, can you go back to the slide on behavioral health services?
I can, yes. The numbers?
Uh, yeah, no, go ahead, teachers first.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're saying there were thirty-two students.
Yeah.
And they made five hundred and seventy-two visits. Can you tell me, oh, you can't tell me, what sort of behavioral issue, what sort of behavioral things are they doing five hundred and seventy-two visits for?
Sure. So, the way, with behavioral health services, we, what we, we provide, you know, kind of a, a, a course of treatment. So it's a specific beginning, middle, and end. So, we provide with that assessment, we come up with treatment goals and, and then work on trying to reach those treatment goals. So it can be things like grief, it can be depression, it can be anxiety, it can be attentional issues, it can be, I'm, you know, having trouble at home and not getting along with friends, it's really a myriad of things that, that kids are struggling with. And generally, you know, kids will be seen, you know, in schools probably a little bit longer, but the course of treatment could be, you know, twelve to eighteen sessions. So, you know, they're seen, you know, weekly, sometimes bi-weekly, sometimes they'll go into groups. So, you know, that's, that's why the, the number, you know, the number of students that are taking the sessions, because they have a number of sessions throughout the year.
And some of this would be like bounce back is more, is bounce back, is that's a...
Bounce, yep.
That's, how many weeks is bounce back?
Um, I think bounce back is twelve weeks, maybe.
Being a lot of success with their students to the bounce back.
Then of course, of course...
You can have, you're going to explain bounce back.
Kids start referred out if they, to a, a different program or whatever, or facility, if the need be.
If they need something more extensive, yeah. Yeah, so the bounce, so the bounce back is our program that works with students around trauma, so working with them on, you know, things, maybe experiences that they had, you know, and working on how to cope with those things, how to work through that, you know, coming up with coping strategies and things like that, so.
It's almost like a curriculum?
Yeah, yeah.
It's basically, they go through, just for, just for me seeing some of my students at Stanton go through it, it's a really amazing process for them.
Yeah, it's an evidence-based practice.
Do you have one behavioral specialist at Teachers?
Yes, yes.
Try Kelly quick, it's the same thing, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, right, so, yeah, similar, similarly, you know, they would be in a, a course of treatment, again, a very specific middle, beginning, middle, and end, you know, which, you know, in this case, they're, they're middle schoolers, so I, I was an adolescent therapist, so those, those kids probably, the, the, the little ones probably stay in therapy a little bit longer, the middle schoolers all like, peace out, so, you know, they, that's probably why she's able to see, you know, a little, a few more students.
And is this individual one-on-one sessions or are they like a group session?
So we do both, we, we do individual sessions primarily and then, and then, you know, and also some group work, but a lot of kids, especially in middle school, you know, it's, you know, even though we talk about, you know, things staying in here and confidentiality and things like that, some, some students are more inclined to have that one-on-one sessions with, with the counselor. We do involve families, again, the middle schoolers, it's a little bit trickier because, you know, they are, you know, exerting their independence, but certainly, in, in, at Stanton and the elementary schools, we're, we're involving parents and having parents involved in, even if it's through virtually, through telemedicine and things, so that we can engage them in the treatment planning.
And on the vaccination end, how connected are you or the level of cooperation between UCFS and Onkis Health District?
We work closely with Onkis Health District, they, you know, they're one of our partners as well. I know that we provide, you know, we, we, we provide here through the, the centers, you know, flu, flu vaccines, we can do that, you know, even, you know, you know, just as an independent visit and do different, you know, flu clinics and things like that. And what we do is, once we know what the, you know, regime of the immunizations are, we will be able to schedule those and bring those over, so, you know, we, but we do work, work closely with the health district, yes.
I have a question, are all of the visits happening during the school, like the, during like, oh, my goodness, I think?
Especially the school hours?
And, yeah, versus school hours?
Um, in, in general, I mean, we do, you know, we do offer flexibility, I mean, if there is, if there needs to be a later session or an earlier session, depending on, you know, if, you know, if, if we are trying to work around maybe a parent's schedule if we're trying to engage them. We also provide services throughout the summer, so, on a little bit more of an abbreviated basis, because, you know, kids are not real keen on coming in for therapy in the summertime, but we do, we, we have a, we have a counselor, actually, our, Lynette Robas, our counselor, who's from Kelly Middle School, works all summer, and so we kind of keep track of those kids throughout the summer and obviously, you know, get them in for services as they need, you know, if, if they're needed, and then reconnect with them in the, in the lab, so.
Okay, so that's on drop rate, and what do they have?
Yes, yes.
And then the way that this all happened, that I asked them to come in and do a presentation, is that when I was at Stanton for the, for the food, and it was just off in the pan, Kinder, not Kinder, and we had talked about all the great things that were happening between us, North Public Schools and them, so I wanted, I knew I wanted to have someone come here just to fill you guys in so that you would know what was happening in the schools. And that was such a great event at Stanton School.
Yeah.
The cars were just pulling up and everybody was putting the food in it, and then we, Laura Dietrich called me up and said, we really have to talk, talk to the board and tell them how great this collaboration has been and this partnership, because they have, we've had so absenteeism, we all know that that's correlated at times with immunizations, and thanks to you, we appreciate that, that work with Laura Dietrich, she's just been so happy to see that go down and so that our kids can come into school.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then, over the next few years, as we're building our new schools, you're gonna be expanding your services into each of the elementaries, too, right?
Ho- hopefully, yes. We're, we're in talks on that, Pam Kinder's on your building committee, so she participates there, you know, and I know that that, from day one, has been part of looking at the, the plans to make sure that there is availability and space to be able to expand services.
So we have, we've had Pam and her team come in.
Yep.
And look with their plans and make sure that it fits within their nursing needs and the UCFS, so that there is a spot in each one. And I did get an email, I think it was from Pam, or maybe you, I forget who sent me an email, saying that you need to apply for the upcoming schools to be able to get into each school, so we're gonna be working on that.
Yes, yes, each school is, each center within your school is independently licensed by the Department of Public Health as a primary care clinic, and so there is, there is a process that, you know, goes into getting that licensure as well as some of our regulations as an FQHC. But, I mean, you know, with your planning, you know, we have time to look at that and also to, you know, be assessing sort of where, where is the need going to be the greatest? And, you know, perhaps, you know, as we saw when we first came in in twenty-seventeen, you all said, you know, the need is really in, more so in behavioral health, you know, and so, you know, those are conversations we can have with you about where you're seeing need and how, how best, you know, especially in the elementary schools, to see what that would look like.
And just, you know, just from working at Stanton and having this here since, I think, the principal there, it's so great because not only do they see these children during school hours, during, it's once a week, and so the, the parents don't have to worry about picking them up and dropping them off later, but also there are times when they're available when that student that they have is struggling in school and they need some therapy on the spot, there are times when that therapist will take them and see them for a little bit during the school day at times when needed.
Right, absolutely.
Now, like Stanton, we're building and building, does a new facility have to be relicensed?
Um, that's a great question, um, you know...
I don't think it does, I think by the last email, I don't think we do, I think we just want to do it for, for, we talked about Greenville, because obviously Greenville's already a new school. Moriarty's never had UCFS in it, so they have to apply for a UCFS there and also Onkis.
Right.
I wonder if Department of Public Health though will still want to just see it?
They may wanna come into it.
They'll probably come in, they do come in and they...
Yeah, exactly, but not have to do all that paperwork?
Right, yeah, we, I mean, we, we, we have routine licensing visits that, you know, so as we're getting, you know, closer to things being open and things, we can work with you on making sure that there's not any, you know, stop in service.
Last question.
Yeah.
Is there a collaboration or overlap with North Public Schools, behavioral staff, I'll say it that way, and your staff? In other words, fifty-one students at Kelly, six hundred and seventy-four visits, are those fifty-one only seeing your folks, or are they involved in seeing North Public Schools as well?
Um...
And I'm, and I...
I don't know the, the exact on that, we work really closely with the, with the social workers and, you know, with, with all of the counselors that are in the schools, you know, ideally in terms of, of reach, my answer would be no, you know, that they, there's not, but at the same time, what we provide is, you know, is a counseling service that's, that's related to something different than their schools, you know, their schooling, their education, things like that. So it's, it's entirely possible, I don't, I don't know, you know, if, how, how often that happens. Generally, the school social workers are the ones who are, are sending the referrals to us, that's how we could get to the students.
And then the other thing, too, that's important piece is that, I call it onboarding, but when the, the initial time that the student comes in, they, they're there with their family and their parents, and they, they have to go in and they all sit down, and I believe it's an hour long, and they...
Yes.
It's not called an onboarding, what is it called?
It's an assessment.
Thank you, it's assessment, so the parents come in or the parent comes in with the student, so we think that's a really great piece to support the child.
Yeah.
Just to add to John's question, if there's, if they're using your service, are outside provider, private providers, are they available, or can the student see those people also?
So it depends on what the student is, it would be looking for. If, if they are going to an outside provider for, say, a different service, something that we're not providing, say, you know, they need to go into a specific therapy or a specific group that only that outside provider provides, then in that case, you know, the, the dual treatment would make sense. In general, you know, it, it doesn't make sense to have an external therapist and, and a UCFS therapist, whether they're a school-based therapist or whether they're a clinic therapist, just because of, you know, the treatment models, but it, it could happen.
So in your service, you're able to give students on some sort of insurance coverage, so that they're covered by you, or if they need those outside services also?
Right, so part of, part of what we do, and we're gonna be hearing up at the beginning of next school year, is we're gonna be at all of your back-to-school events, we're gonna be at all your parents' nights, we're gonna be there with, with our staff, we're gonna be, if we, in the, we're gonna be out in the parking lot and maybe dressed up as two and talking to kids and getting things out to them. But we're, so the parents know how to enroll all their students, and if they need insurance, we get them connected to that as well. So we're, we're looking to provide them, you know, a whole, a whole host of services and truly collaborate with you so that they can get, get as, you know, be as successful with their education as they can be.
Okay, if anyone has any further questions, how's the best way to contact you or someone from your staff?
So I have, I think on the end of this, I have... So I have, I think on the end of this, I have my contact information.
I'll let Amber send that out to the whole board.
Yeah, and also Kelly Brown is our, she's, she's our operation supervisor for the school-based health centers. I do also have in-your-pockets our direct school-based line. This, this is in your packet. And I'll leave some up here if there's anyone who would like to see any. But certainly, you know, welcome any questions that you might have, you know, after the fact and appreciate you taking the time to, to hear about our services.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate the service.
And you know what you're doing for.
They were a lifesaver for me. When my kids were here, they already had one and, you know, they were both athletes. So it was nice for the physical.
Yes.
For this year, I doubt my daughter gets.
Yes, who this could be.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Yes, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, we're, we're, we're big in when there's volleyball. We're like, yo, we got to get those kids in. So we're, we're good, we're good with the sports physicals.
Thank you very much. Does anyone sign up for public comment, Amber?
I don't have anybody.
Okay. Does anyone want to comment, make a public comment? Anyone here wish to expand public comment? And finally, last time, anyone wish to make a public comment? Hearing none, I now declare public comment closed. Okay, we'll go on to the reports. Reported to the chair. Good evening to all assembled here and at home. Welcome to your Norwich Board of Education's last regularly scheduled meeting of the academic school year. We'll meet next in September twenty twenty-five to start the new academic year. Today is National Ice Tea Day, which is practically a high holy day south of the Mason Dixon Line. It's also the day the first Dutch settlers arrived four hundred and fifteen years ago to settle the island of Manhattan and start the settlement of New Amsterdam, which later became New York City. Important birthdays today are the actors Hattie McDaniel, the first black Oscar winner for Gone with the Wind, and Judy Garland, who played Dorothy in The Wizard of Oz. Also born on this day was William Rosenberg, the founder of Dunkin' Donuts, a proudly New England institution. There are more than ten thousand outlets in thirty-two countries. I attended last night's city council meeting where they finally adopted a budget at eleven fifty PM, just ten minutes before the midnight deadline. Our choices were made for a lean budget, but reality set in when it became obvious that despite a last-minute effort to enact a zero but increased budget, the pain of reduction in services to meet such a goal necessitated a mill rate increase. We will vote on approving the one percent increase to the education budget this evening, far below the nearly five percent increase originally proposed. I attended many spring concerts the last couple of weeks. And I was most impressed by one school whose fifth graders played a truly hard classical piece from Handel's Water Music. Alas, no ol' those. So far, we've graduated our students at the Norwich Transition Academy. And as you heard earlier, the eighth graders at both Teachers and this morning at Kelly. We've also had graduations at Mahan, Vets, and McLean. Tomorrow, we'll finish out the, the promotion schedule with events at Stanton, Moriarty, Uncas, and Huntington, all scheduled between nine thirty and ten o'clock. Please check with the school if you need to attend one of those events. NFA will also have its year-end graduation ceremonies at four o'clock. Anyone who's interested, also tomorrow at twelve noon, Kathy Austin will be honored as the Norwich native daughter. And there'll be a luncheon at the Holiday Inn. For that, you have, that's a ticketed event you have to sign up for. She's very instrumental in getting grants for our school building project. And that concludes my report. On to the report of the superintendent.
Okay, just want to start with, if you look on the document, we had all the names, but we have the district-wide recognitions for Teacher of the Year, Rookie of the Year. And you can see Kelly Middle School, Amy Busby won the District Teacher of the Year. Rookie of the Year was Brian Olivier, who is a music teacher at Stanton. And tomorrow, we will announce the Pair of the Year. So I can't say who it is because I'm surprised this person.
Tomorrow. Wait, what was that? I'm having trouble hearing you, Susan.
Sure, we're on the park right now for the district-wide recognition, the Teacher of the Year, Rookie Teacher of the Year, and Pair of, Pair Educator of the Year. So, so far, we've announced the Teacher of the Year.
Right.
Rookie of the Year. And you'll see on the board docs, it lists all the schools who the, who they, who received it for each school. And then tomorrow, we'll be doing Pair Educator of the Year. So that's a secret right now. Stadium School Roundbri- Raking Ceremony took place today. For those of you who didn't make it, it was a really nice celebration. I think one of the things that I said was Team Norwich. It felt really good to be in that, in Stanton. We didn't have it outside. We did the shovels outside, but we did the ceremony inside. And it was great to see all the members. And it was so many people that really had a big part in the school project. So it feels really good to get that behind us and look forward to the Greenville ceremony. We'll give you the, we'll let you know when that will be. I think, Mike, do we have a date for Greenville yet?
Not yet. We're working on that behind the scenes.
When we do, how are we going to publicize that? Because I had some parents asking.
It's on, it's, it's been put out to parents on Parents Square. It's been on Facebook.
Parent didn't know. Is it on Parents Square? Because everybody told her to check. Okay. Mike hasn't seen it.
Okay. We'll make sure we do better. I'll tell you later, Susan, get that out there.
And I would like to add to Susan that not only are the adults in the gymnasium who are excited for the new construction project, but the students who have pledged allegiance. They're all lining up for the American flag. They have the, the image of what the gymnasium, the future gym, gym will be like in the cafeteria. We hear there's a little chirping background. This is what it's going to be, our new, our new gym. Ah, so cool. So kids, students, you know, get excited for this new future, this new evolution of, of the school.
Thanks for bringing up. So Carolina did a nice job making sure. We had some students there because it was four fifteen. You know, some of the parents will pick them up, so we're happy to have them there. Also, prior to that, during this week, we had all the classes go out there with their hard hats and their shovels. So I was out there with the kindergartners, I think on Monday or Tuesday, and they just thought it was the coolest thing ever to be out there with it. So we got them, we get them all excited for that. And they can actually see outside some of the construction, obviously, that's going on. So Carolina's done a great job with making sure that they save over there. And Amy Edwards, who became new assistant principal, is there as well. And she'll be taking over a lot of that, that job. So that's exciting. Substitute staff placement. It's actually not called Educational Support Services, I found out, Amber.
Really?
So we are moving towards, for the last few years, we have been doing it in-house. We had Kelly Services, which is a substitute that wasn't working for us. So we went to our in-house. And each year, we kept telling them this might be the end of, we, we give them a very good salary per, per day to do this food home, feeder subs. And they're assigned to different buildings, but sometimes they move around based on where the need is. It's become very hard to manage. And with the principals, I used to do it, when I was a principal, we'd get together at six o'clock in the morning and start shuffling where people need. And now we're finding, you know, some, we don't know where they, we don't know where they are all the time. So we, we didn't want to go back to Kelly. It didn't work out for us well. So we spoke with, I spoke with the superintendent, New Britton, and he said that this was the greatest thing. He actually said, you have to at least listen to them. Some of their hardest schools to get sub coverage for, that they have a high ninety percent placement in some of the, the most difficult schools. We brought Bob in to talk about the, the budget process of it. And we know that it's going to save us some money going to ESS. What I like about ESS is that the, the people that work, there's going to be a teacher, who is a former teacher, that will be on, we will have a space for them in, in central office. And that's what they'll do, they're onboarding and they'll do their interviewing. Yesterday, we met here with all of our feeder subs so that they could go into ESS. We made it very seamless for them. They talked to them. They offer healthcare, dental care. They offer 401. They have, it's, it's a very big company. So they'll be doing all of that for us. So if anybody wants to have some booklets, if you want to look at it. But I did ask them today, yesterday, it's just called, they just picked ESS. It doesn't stand for anything. So. But they get, they get it confused. Everybody thinks it's called Educational Support Services because there is a company out there like that. So we're excited to work with them and we're going to see how it does. They wanted us to do a five-year contract. We said, let's do one year, see how it goes. And they'll build up, they have pair edu-, they have nurse subs. They have pair educator subs, school psychologists at any kind of staff number, they do have a sub for.
So if we need a sub, a teacher needs to call up, what's that?
Frontline. And they're taking over our frontline too. So they take over the whole thing. They do, and they do everything. So we'll know exactly where everybody is. So we're pretty excited. I don't know, Bob, if you want to add anything to that?
So I was, we met with them yesterday?
Yes.
And I was very impressed with them. They had a team of five people here, you know, very knowledgeable. We're doing this for multiple reasons, as Susan said. Cost savings is one of them, but placement and higher fill rates is obviously another one. But I did a look back and the road of substitute dollars has been a very rocky and bumpy one. It's probably one of the hardest things to budget. So I just went back two years ago, in twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the certified sub line, we spent two million, seven hundred and five thousand dollars. It's a big number. We've made a conscious effort to, we will attempt to reduce subs. Susan's been a champion of that. And Lisa has as well. And the environment's changed. We have more stability with our staff. This year, we're probably going to end the year at one million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's a reduction of one point three million dollars. That's a big number. So if we can use them to manage this into a more predictable expense and provide better service to our schools, that would be a great thing.
And the other thing too is we just, we're, we're down somebody in HR too, so we really can't keep up on it. So when subs aren't there, we can't, it's hard for us to have the time, for them to have the time to onboard. And then when they're not showing up to make those phone calls to say, hey, are you still available to sub? They take care of everything. If they see that subs aren't grabbing positions, they will have a talk with them. If there's any kind of issues in the schools, they go out, they will actually meet with the principals. And if they're having any problems, they will, they, they're right there. So we're pretty excited about that. We also don't have to keep track of the sick time.
Yeah, reduces our payroll taxes.
Payroll taxes.
Taxes, childcare. And basically, we don't have to deal with that.
Wow.
Hopefully, this is really going to work out well for us from an operational standpoint and a budget standpoint.
And they really want to impress us. So I think, and because they want to grab some partner schools that we have a relationship with. So I think they're, they're ready to go. So we're, we're excited about it.
Exactly. We're getting into this niche there.
So that's ESS, so look for that. And I, like I said, I do have some manuals here if anybody wants to look at them. And I want to talk a little bit about the new pre-K model. It's called the Local Governance Partnership, which is not going to start next year. It'll start the year after. What did I do with that? Did I drop that? I was telling Amber when I came in and I went over here, all my files fell out into the water. All right. So let's talk to, I can speak a little to it now. I had a write-up on it, but the way, they're going to, John actually said it the right way when I was talking to him about it. It's more regionalized pre-K that they're moving towards. So you can't, we can't be on our own anymore. So either we get people to do it with us, thank you, Amber, or they're going to assign districts to us. So we originally, we spoke with Mayor Nystrom, who's very, very involved in this, and Linda Allen from Learn. And we picked Montville, I mean Ledger, to be one of them. So superintendent partnering. We have a good relationship with him. We spoke with his mayor and we had a nice conversation. So we're in the partner, we're in the process of partnering with area districts that form Local Governance Partnership. They're called LGPs. With the proposed name, we came up with the name of Southeastern Connecticut Early Learning Alliance. And the districts that we have with us now include us, of course, Ledger. We got Grispool to join us, Lisbon, and Volantown. So we, you know, very like minds around this. And we've met several times before saying, yes, we want to do this. And we just signed the paperwork. There's some transition money that they're giving us for this. We will meet at Learn at the end of June, I believe, Amber, June twenty-fourth. We have a meeting at Learn and we'll all be together. So the initiative is, is just a great potential to strengthen early childhood collaboration, which everyone knows the governor wants to do right now across the region. And we're, we're very appreciative of the opportunity and possibly invite them to join us even before that Learn meeting. So that's where, that's where it's moving towards.
So it's sort of like the Learn rest for pre-K?
Sort of, yeah.
Yes. And you, you just said, Learn is going, is Learn is going to be part of that?
Learn is going to help us. Yeah, Linda Allen works for Learn and she does a lot of work in pre-K.
I know so many jobs.
So, and then other, other towns have joined together as well. But, so we don't know. It's like they're building the plane when they're flying it. So we really don't know. There's some, there's some positions for parent liaisons that are going to be there, but there's not talk of what there's, what their need to do yet. But we will hear more as time goes on.
And is there state funding behind this model?
Yes.
So that's, that's the incentive to, to form the model to, to get the state funding.
I think the other thing too is when we were talking about it with these partners that we're talking about is that they have, we have Kathy Austin. Some people have different state representatives. And we figure the more state rep, representatives that we have on our side that will go to bat for us during legislation hearings, the better it will be for us. So I'm not sure, what are they doing in London? Do you know?
London, yes.
Yes. They, they, you've heard. So they're, like you said, we don't even know. They could say, hey, you need to take this town on because they can't buy, be by themselves. We really don't know what it's going to be like yet.
So that, so that begins a way of, of foundation of working collaboratively with other districts, right?
Yes.
And that leads into some programs that we have.
That's right.
I was.
Oh, but you, you say with administrators collaborating, working with pre-K, I get that. Although, by the way, oh, I like those things.
So by the way, we, we have a, a, something called the Rose City School Program. You might be interested.
Well, yeah. We need to establish a relationship so that we can carry on.
Okay.
People who are friendly.
Yeah, it's nice. It's, it's going to, and like I said, we really wanted to pull in the districts. We really work closely with them. So obviously, Visual's one of our partner schools we're, we're sending, sending our kids to. So we're excited about it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to add this now because it's the appropriate time. In part of the legislative process, the state created its pre-K early childhood endowment fund. I'm not sure what the exact name of it is off the top of my head, but the state's going to appropriate up to three hundred million dollars per year out of, of general fund surplus money. So we're not certain yet how that might tie in with the, this element, which started to read some of the legislation. And there's one provision in there where families earning a hundred thousand dollars or less will be able to attend pre-K free of charge. So we're not sure how that might impact. Because we have, I'm not sure when it starts. I have to go through that.
It's not next year.
I, that piece might because it's separate from this.
This is completely different, we just tell.
Wow. So it's sort of a sneaky forced way to, to begin regionalization?
Yeah. I think the state's goal is to provide free, you know, universal pre-K statewide. So we'll have to, we'll learn more and that's all we know now. So we're not alarmed. But we just want to make sure we don't lose funding in this, because who will pay the difference if we have families now who paid fees to attend?
Thank you, Bob.
Do you know what the incentive was behind this to regionalize?
The incentive is, well, the incentive is so that we have areas that they're, we're working together because the smaller towns really can't do it on their own. So.
Like Franklin or Spray or?
You can't.
A lot of the programs are understaffed. I mean, a lot of the decisions about who's getting into programs or not are very controversial in places. So this should be able to expand access and also.
It is more about access, you're right. It is more about access, you're right, it is about access.
And a lot of these programs are church-based too, that are private providers. And eight, three schools, three churches went bankrupt the past few months in Norwich, so.
In Iceland, which went too, yeah. So it doesn't start next year, it's the year after. So I'll keep you guys up to date as we learn more. So it's still very, in the very early stages. Transportation update real quick, everybody knows that we're doing opt-ins now. We finally got the rest of the opt-in for NFA, for Norwich Tech, and for our pre-K through eight. And that information went out yesterday. Maria sent all that information out to Transportation Per Student so that we can see if we're going to be able to save money based on the opt-ins. So we're hoping that there's less students. We already know, we talked about this, we see buses that are half-full, a quarter-full. So that's the whole reason that we did the opt-in forms. So we'll keep you updated if there's the savings for that.
Related to that, should we try to schedule a transportation committee like checking maybe before the school year?
That's actually a good idea.
Just to communicate where we're at and so like in our first meeting in September, we could do a report on.
That's a good idea.
Now with the opt-ins, are they going to rejigger the, the schedules or the pickup points?
That's the whole point of it. We may not save as many buses, but it may save hours, which saves us money for transportation. But it could save us a bus, we're looking into that. But mostly it's going to save us hours, which is great.
So I'll be in touch with you and obviously, you know, if it's the best time, we're going to have all the information that we need.
Okay, sounds good. Budget update, Mr. Cool has talked a little bit about that. As everyone knows, we were there until, I think it was adjourned at 11:57 PM. So that was a fun night last night. And Bob will talk more about that. Preschool update, we had, finally NIAC came. They came yesterday and today. One of the last days of school, so they came yesterday to.
As I predicted last month, June 10th.
June 10th.
It is, it is.
So today, it was Veterans, Uncas, and McCann that they went to visit today. So Cory's, I'm sure Cory Beckwith is very worried that that's all over, because that was a very big deal. We'll find, we won't know if we pass for three months. So we'll, we'll keep you updated.
I missed that, I'm sorry. What, we need the number 30?
NIAC is the preschool accreditation.
The preschool had a test too, an evaluation.
They do, they come in, NIAC comes in and they look at, to see if you have eight inches of wood chips. They actually measure to make sure you have eight inches of wood chip, chips, they go in. And they watch, they watch the classrooms and they just take, they have like checklists and everything.
And through the efforts of the Education Foundation, we found some donors who were able to.
There was a lot of old hard sand from the wood, get all the trees chopped out.
Yeah, but.
There's a ton of.
I haven't.
Can't use it. They can't use the trees, it's going to be trees especially.
Oh, I know. We were discussing with the building.
I didn't know that.
I know, I was teasing about the piles, they were huge.
Yeah.
The other thing that I don't have in here that I added today, I think, well, we've talked this about, we're going to the State Board of Education for the Commissioners Network for Teachers Memorial School. So Mr. LeHoy and I, two weeks ago, went up to the State Department of Education and we had to present in front of half of the board. Tomorrow morning, we will be, Ed and I will be there at nine o'clock in the morning to present to the full board. Typically, what, from what we heard is, once we get to this point, if they didn't think that we were going to be a good fit, we wouldn't even be there. So it looks like we will be Commissioners Network. The bad news is that the legislation, if anyone knows this, is that they're getting rid of the Commissioners Network. We were supposed to have four to five years for teachers now, it'll be two years, but we're grateful to have that. LaQuanix School is going to be a focus group, which is very similar to Commissioners Network, but that's off the table now. So LaQuanix will not be eligible based on the fact that they're not, they're phasing out Commissioners Networks for schools now. And one of the last things, like this is great news, certified staff vacancies for 2526 is one. We only have grade seven science at Teachers Middle School and that's the only vacancy. So we're pretty, pretty proud of that, pretty happy about that.
That's one of the reasons why the sub-line is there also.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. Jamie is not here, so do we have any report from her?
Sure.
She filed some stuff, but I don't know, you just want to touch on the highlights, Susan?
Yeah, I'll just talk a little bit, I just talked to her, as you know, she sent out an email saying that we, we're still looking at the data. We are having our admin retreat. Typically, we have it in August for four days, four to five days. We decided at the beginning of this year, we spoke with the union, and we will be having an admin retreat on Thursday, the day after school ends, so that we can review all the data together, so it's fresh in their minds, and they will make goals going into the next year. So we'll have that and Jamie's going to present that and give all that, all the details to you. But like she explained, some of the data was still coming in at one of the, you know, the last couple of days of school, so we're working on that. The one thing I want to say that relates to the academic office is, I think, anyone that's been at our district-wide events or at our promotion ceremonies has seen the music that's been involved in the schools. It's been phenomenal. And I received this email, and I want to read this out loud. It's from, actually, this person is a staff member in our, in our district. And she wrote to me today, Dear Miss Lassard, this is my family's first year in Norwich. We come from Manchester, New Hampshire, which is the largest city in New Hampshire. Last year, my oldest daughter was able to join chorus as a third grader. She loved it, but did not progress as a singer. For example, she could not produce the correct notes nor sing in time. This year, in Connecticut, my daughter joined chorus. She can now sing a multitude of notes and stay in harmony with her teacher. She also joined band for the first time. She chose percussion and the bells. At the beginning of the school year, she could not read notes nor play in time. Now she can do both exceedingly well. This is because her music teacher, Miss Batsford, which is Uncas, has taken the time to cultivate her growth. Last year in New Hampshire, my oldest daughter began to play the flute for the first time. Over the years, she learned different notes at a small pace, but her teacher never challenged her beyond what the introductory music book had to offer. This year in Connecticut, in Norwich, she has been challenged and has far exceeded expectations. She is a wonderful flute player who has chosen to perform in all city band, perform a solo at the spring concert, and perform at the eighth grade graduation. She is proud and confident because of Mr. Santoro's teaching. Dr. Santoro is the instrument teacher at Global. I am writing this letter to tell you how magnificent, magnificent this program department is in Norwich and how grateful I am that my children are learning from teachers who are passionate about music. Miss Batsford at Uncas and Mr. Santoro at Teachers are brilliant music teachers. They show spectacular dedication to their students and truly celebrate each individual. Music is the pathway to language development, literacy skills, mathematical thinking, and self-regulation. Music makes my children happy. I thank Miss Batsford and Mr. Santoro for helping my children form with music. So we should really be proud. LaQuanix chorus today was awesome. I'm pretty, I'm pretty proud and we passing that around to our staff.
Yeah, I attended most of the spring concerts this year and the, the music is just amazing, both instrumental and chorus.
I think the most important line is, and, pathway to language development, literacy skills, mathematical thinking, and self-regulation.
I always say that.
And they're singing not just English songs, they're singing in African languages. It's amazing.
I know that too, like we should, I'll retire you, but she's already making sure kids have their for next year. And like at the end, she's making sure, they're already making sure that gives them a quiz for next year. So that's one story for me, so I've been seeing a lot from her.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Uh, next, Director, hello.
Dr. Hughes.
Doctor Hughes.
Good evening. My daughter is an oboist, Mr. Cool, I thought I should mention that. It seemed, oh, since we were talking about music. However, I'll get to my report, I just wanted to mention that. Music is amazing and it does amazing things, so I'm really proud too of our district. Um, in my report, as usual, I have our monthly out-of-district placement report. We are at 1114 for out-of-district placements. If you remember from last month, we had some students who had moved in already in placement. So there's not much that we can do necessarily when that happens. So last year, we ended at 119. I do anticipate some growth in this area next year with our new programs. I did some highlights just for your information. And, you know, based on, of course, is our expansion of Rose City School. I didn't get the pictures in time of their field day, but they did a wonderful field day over at Rose City. Had a lot of great games and all kinds of things for the students and it went very well. But as you know, we started with an initial enrollment of two students and we're ending with eight students. And we're doubling that for the start of this coming school year with expanding into the middle school as well. We're developing our school resilience program. We met today about that. We're launching that for grade six through 12, which will incorporate credit recovery for our students in some of our really expensive placements who are not attending. Again, bringing them back to their own community instead of, you know, other placements. As Mr. Iovino said, this is a perfect opportunity to think about regionalizing and bringing in more partners to do this work as we're really trying very hard to figure out creative ways to serve our students, so.
Can I just add one thing to that?
Sure.
So we did meet on that, Jack Fields, if anybody knows Jack Fields, he's been in our district, he's a retired math teacher. And he works with our kids that are expelled, works so great with them. He has agreed, we met with him today, he has agreed to take on these kids and it could be at the hybrid Apex Learning plus in-house. That's what we want to do, is bring them back and then fully integrate them back into school. And the other thing is that we know that we want to have a social worker attached to this program to support these kids and Jack in that role. So we're excited that Jack Fields wants to keep doing this.
Yes, it's, that's.
He has such a great relationship with kids.
Yes, and there's so many examples that we discussed about that today. So we do anticipate growing that program. We anticipate there will, there will be a need for that program in other districts, we know that that's the case. So we will be launching that this fall. You know that we've done a lot of work with our paraeducators. We were the first district to offer an in-person option for 321 Insight, who's a partner with the state of Connecticut. And has rolled out PD, high-quality PD. We were the first district to have them actually come into district. And we did let the paraeducator kind of, we call it learning academy. And did some fun raffles and had a really great time with it. So that was really well-attended and a lot of great feedback on that. So we've been really working hard on training, programming, thinking about how best to support our students, staff development. We brought in PD Monster to help us work on planning for next school year. Different community engagement, as you know, our eighth annual Autism Wellness Fair is very well-attended. We have ESY coming up in, in the month of July with over a hundred students attending at both Huntington and here at Kelly. So, you know, we are happy to also join with the academic program that will be at Huntington along with us like last year. So we're really looking forward to, you know, continuing the work into the summer. So we do have, of course, some summer priorities. I wanted to mention to you that I'm very, very pleased to tell you that I will be at the Special Education Legislative Summit in Washington DC again this summer, knocking on the doors. But I'm happy to bring any letter that, if possible, if the board would like to engage like they did last year. The platforms or the issue statements are not out yet with the Council of Administrators of Special Education. But I do anticipate that the biggest one will be funding for IDEA and continuing funding for IDEA. So just to put that on your radar, that is something that's happening earlier this summer than it was last summer. Of course, we are in a really good spot for personnel right now, so pending any changes, you know, we're going to ensure that we have our faculty and staff ready to go. We do anticipate potentially some movement of people, but, you know, we do have the people, so that's good. Continued planning for Rose City and really digging into the planning for the resilience program. And continued realignment of programming and analysis of our IEPs with building principals. We'll be doing that, Mrs. Hamlin and I, talking with our building principals this summer about student supports and paraeducators, et cetera. So really working hard on that. And then I did put in, being ambitious and all, I did put in some fall priorities and I still get those started, right, and thinking about that planning. So those are also captured in the report for you. And really just are focusing on, you know, when we come back to school, the quality of our program, continuing to support our teachers and our, and our staff. And I would like to thank the entire Student Services Department, it is amazing work that they do. And I'm just pleased to be able to represent them in this fashion, so. And thank you all for your support this year as well in Student Services. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the number of students enrolled in this summer program at Huntington and Kelly, do we take as many as are needed? Do we, everyone has access to that?
So the academic program that runs out of Jamie's office is a little bit different than the one that runs out of Student Services because ours is IEP-driven. So if a student qualifies for that, of course, they receive those services. So those are all of our students pre-K through actually high school and beyond. So we have students that attend their out-of-district school because that's where they go for ESY. So in that capacity, yes, all of our students who qualify do attend. Or they have the option to attend, they can attend.
The only topic that I didn't really hear was our attendance metrics. How are those, I don't think, I think that's Jamie handles that, right? Because Susan, do you have any idea on the attendance metrics, how, how they're improving?
You're talking about our chronic absenteeism?
Yes.
Since I'm there in the report, I can get, I can tell you right now, I'll give you a snapshot, I'm just looking at the other day, I had it right there.
It's just, you know.
I put it on the. It's a. It's on Jamie's. It's at the end.
He could also file separately, I'm not sure. So you can see it? I can click on it.
I don't know, if it's filed, I'll, I'll look at it after.
So.
My brain brings a little screen.
I can tell you where we are right now. It was a long night last night. As of right now, twenty, at this time last year, we were at 28.55%. We're now at 19.33%. You know, it doesn't seem like it went down that much. However, there are some pockets of schools that made it, outliers that made it go up. For example, there's one school that has a 32.40, so that skewed, skews it a little bit. There's some, LaQuanix doing great at 9.14%, Uncas 10.86%. So we're seeing, you know, some downward trends by school. So we'll continue to work on that. We need to, we need to, we, we have a family in attendance people. I feel like, I have these conversations with Dr. Pinnell over at NFA and I feel like, no matter what we do, sometimes we just can't get that number down. So I was thinking about some different things that I can do at central office, maybe put out a video to parents explaining the importance of attendance and the detriments of not attending. So there's some things that we need to, to work on and maybe it's not just by building, maybe we need to start doing some other things. Jamie and I have talked about tag teaming and how we're going to do that with parents, with kids and.
Did the state give more or took away grant money for those attendance-centric programs?
We still have it, we still have the two-year grant that Jamie's working off for these attendance people.
Can I ask, what was the attendance for preschool, pretty much? Were people, were the students attending regularly?
So we don't, we don't keep, that's not the. So we don't, we don't keep, that's not, the state doesn't ask us to keep track of pre-K attendance. But it is something that, you know, we try to impress upon them so that when they go into kindergarten. We all know that attendance, it's kindergarten, fifth grade and eighth grade are typically the highest chronic absenteeism. And we feel if we impress upon the families about the importance of pre-K, that that will follow them into kindergarten, so.
How are the pre-K, how are they evaluating whether they're ready to move on to kindergarten?
What do you mean?
Like, how do we know that they're ready for regular school?
Well, they, we don't pull kids back in pre-K, but so when they get into kindergarten, you know, they have to meet the requirements of the state, which is the age. And we do have, we have been using, if they're five before December, by December 31st, then we have them come in and we do do assessments with students that are still four years old.
When they do apply for a waiver, who's evaluating them to see if they're ready?
Cory Beckwith has a whole team and we have kindergarten teachers. So Sue Blinderman's always been great at that. Sue Blinderman's been a kindergarten teacher for 30-something years. And so she, they do the work and they do some assessments with them. So it's great to have kindergarten teachers because they know where they should be when they come in there.
No, it's just, I've heard that some kids have been waived that weren't necessarily ready.
Well, they get like toilet trained.
I can't hear you, Mark, what?
They've got to be toilet trained and all of that.
Oh, they do now?
Yeah, we do have some, we have some assessments.
I was gonna say, they don't have to be totally.
They're supposed to be, but we obviously make some, depend, it just depends on the student. It's an individual thing.
There's only one more year for the waiver.
Correct, that just came out.
There's only one more year for what?
This legislative session passed. This next year coming up is the last year of schools.
So from now on, you have to be five. There's no waiver, so you have to be five by December 31st or you cannot enter kindergarten.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions for Lisa or not? Okay, on to man of the hour, Bob.
Thank you, on what I did to deserve that. Anyway, I'm going to talk to you about two items tonight that have occupied most of my time since the turn of the new year, January. That would be where are we going to end up this year and the budget. Back in December, January, it was looking fairly bleak for us in terms of whether we're going to have a deficit or not, a matter of how much. So I let the board know that on the first forecast officially that I did in February and I was estimating up to $400,000. We've made, we went into a budget freeze early in the winter and I will say that made a significant difference. You know, we're basically at the end of the year, so I have to go on a limb. Are we going to be in the black or is it red? So everything right now is indicating that we will not be in a deficit. That will be slightly favorable. But I would caution everyone, once I said that, it will be like a razor-thin collection or a photo finish at the Kentucky Derby. We could be $100, $200,000 to the good, but that seems like a big number, but $100,000 is roughly one-tenth of 1% of our budget. That's how close we will be. So how did that happen? I have to give an awful lot of credit to not only my fellow cabinet members, but the district leadership at the buildings and schools. They have budget freeze. You know, you go into a budget freeze in January, the question is, how much will be left over at the end of the year? Because they're still going to need their stuff. Right now, it looks like in our variable expenses, it's going to be about $345,000 to $350,000 on spend money. And I don't think our surplus, if we have one, will be that great. So had they gone out and spent all their money, we'd definitely be in a deficit. So a lot of credit goes to them. They may do without, I don't want to have another year like that again. And not only did they make do without, they didn't whine, they didn't complain, they didn't say it's unfair, they just did it. So that was a testament to them. And then we had a lot of efforts by individuals within departments. Rose City School was instrumental. By bringing back more students in January, we avoided paying tuitions to those out placements. When staff members left, we didn't replace them right away. Example would be the registration. I don't know if a person left, but probably three months ago, we did without. So it was, if we do achieve the positive variance at the end of the year, it was definitely a collective team effort. And that would be something I'm very pleased with, the efforts of everybody. It's not a Bob thing, I just report the numbers, but everybody's been working on this for six months. And in fairness, I spend too much time looking at it. It prevents me from doing things that I should be doing that could help us save money. If we can save money in the non-salary expenses, that provides more money for staff, for academics. And I just want to take a little look back at two numbers. I'm not going to talk about a lot of things this tonight. I'll wait till we convene and I really know. It's going to take six weeks to know where we really ended up. We'll look at two non-salary items, heat for our buildings and diesel fuel and gas for our buses. In my mind, that doesn't do a lot to educate our students. It gets them to school in a safe way and our staff and students, if they're comfortable, they might teach better and be more comfortable. But it's not a lot of academic learning from heat and gas. I went back to just two years ago. For natural gas to heat our schools, we spent $607,000. This year, we're going to end up spending $306,000. So that's a reduction of $301,000. So how did that happen? Maybe the weather was a little bit better. You recall, we had to replace boilers at Stanton and Gorgo and they've been in operation the last two years. So they're high-efficiency gas boilers, 95% efficiency versus the old oil boilers we had. We still have inefficient buildings, but it probably did make a difference. So looking forward to new buildings when we have efficient heating systems and heating and cooling system and efficient buildings from the building envelope standpoint. I'm hoping we see a positive thing on our utilities. Then get, we get our gas from NPU and our public utilities. They do an outstanding job at purchasing. So they've purchased at opportune times and the market conditions have changed. So those factors altogether helped us to save $300,000 from two years ago. Then if I look at gas, two years ago, bringing our students to school and field trips and a little bit of gas we use for, in the maintenance department, we spent $676,000. This year, we're probably going to spend about $509,000, $167,000 less. That's a reflection of market prices. Diesel fuel is, is less and gasoline is less. We're still driving basically the same routes. But I was able to enter into favorable contracts of 15 months in advance when diesel was low. So combined, that's a reduction of $468,000, almost a half million dollars. So when I see savings like that, I try to equate that to staff positions. That's maybe four, five, six teachers, eight or nine paras. Our whole custodial budget is $1.7 million. This is almost 25% of that. So if we can do things like that through good business practices, through working with our principals, through good contracts, collaboration with the city, new efficient buildings, then we're doing that job collectively because we are stewards of public funds. And it's, it's our job, not to educate, but to spend those funds wisely. And one last thing, I'll just comment about 24, 25. As you know, student transportation and a nature initiative to try and control those costs. So I look at transportation on a per-day cost. And this is for our type-two and special education, which are mostly the special education buses, the large type-one and our wheelchair buses. We run three wheelchair buses a day, on average, 38 type-two buses and 52 large buses. That's a big fleet. Our cost per day in May dropped to $50,000, $619,000. That's a trend that's been going on. Compared to the year-to-date cost, the average cost was $51,360, so it's $740 less. That might not seem like a lot of money, but if you can do that for 180 school days, it's $133,000. So we're hopeful that these changes with May, the opt-in and things like that will continue to reduce transportation. Lisa and I met with an outside vendor regarding potential providing van service to us, one dedicated provider as opposed to using seven or eight different providers. So we're hopeful we'll find some cost savings there for next year. So the budget freeze was very impactful. What could cause us not to be in a deficit? Two, that can not be positive, but we have a little bit of a deficit. Pre-K, as you know, is not fully funded by the grant. We won't know on our complete reimbursement, pre-K, it's based on enrollment, where the expenses are. So right now, it could be a $350,000 deficit in pre-K that the Board of Ed absorbs. So where that ends up will have a little bit of impact. How much we receive in Medicaid reimbursement, the district does bill. We have one more month of billing, so that could have an influence. So hopefully, I have my fingers crossed and if I had to make a bet, I'd bet we're above zero. So if you have any questions about 24, 25?
Bob, so any, any surplus we have, will that go into the non-placing fund again?
Actually, probably not. We, the legislation changed where Board of Ed, I think, does not have to ask permission, but there might be some charter ordinances that we'd have to deal with. We have a issue with our healthcare self-insurance fund. I won't spend a lot of time on that tonight. But basically, we are self-insured. We're pooled with the City of Norwich, which includes firefighters, police department and Public Works and also NPU. What ends up happening is our insurance rates, which are called allocation rates, are based on the experience of the entire pool. So it doesn't separate out Norwich Public Schools' experience versus NPU versus that. So we go by what the rates are that Anthem provides us. We receive the claims, the city receives the claims and they charge the claims because they come by NPU, the school district and the city. So we've been paying out more in claims on the Board of Ed side than we collect in premiums from our employees and from the board chair of our thing. And that has been going on now for over three to four years. So it's probably not due to just average shifts in claims. If you recall, in 2021, when we had a large surplus from COVID years, we deposited $2.7 million into the insurance fund. The following year, we put in $938,000, so I thought we would be good. Over the last 18 months, that's eroded. And we are now in deficit on the Board of Ed side by $2 million. And at some point, we have to fund that if the claims don't turn. So Susan and I have been working with our broker and we've talked to some upside people, we've talked to the city. And sometime within the next six months, we're going to have to come to a decision on what district does going forward with health insurance. So any money we have on the surplus side really needs to go towards that self-insurance fund deficit.
So you're saying, like, if NPU has a lot of claims, that affects our rate also? Because when this pool?
Yeah, everybody.
Everybody in that pool.
There's one claim that's extraordinarily high and extraordinarily usual and that's very impactful. And that's really all I can say.
We're, we're still sifting through information that we have, though. So Bob and I have been working with our broker and I've been asking for additional information that will help us figure out next steps.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's very difficult getting information from Anthem. We've given our brokers challenges on what to do. We've asked for more and more. We need to, we need to make, come to a decision. Is this just a normal part of the average flow? We're on the high side now? Because right now, NPU and the city are contributing more than they're paying out. We're paying out more than we're contributing. And in the overall aggregate, the pool is okay. The pool needs to be in the $3, $4 million range. So in the end, we are going to need to figure this out with the help of our broker. It's not something we can do on our own.
So I guess the answer, Christine, is if we did have any extra money, we'd go towards?
Exactly. I remember him saying that before. At that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So with me, we've talked with Josh, the city's aware of it. And we're the largest, I think, is roughly 983 participants in the self-insured fund or, and all the plans between the three bodies and we have 485 members. So if we were to leave self-insurance pool, that would have an impact on the city and NPU. So it's not a decision we can necessarily make on our own.
Thank you, Bob.
So last night, the city council approved our 1%. So that left us with, what was the total budget now, Bob?
I don't have an exact number.
We have it.
It's in your motion, but.
Really?
It's in the motion.
Is that what it is, about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'll talk briefly about the budget and the legislative process. And the reason the city waits is because the legislative process is so impactful on Norwich. There were some surprises in the legislative process. I'll start with the ECS grant. When we received the allocations by town, which came from the Office of Fiscal Analysis, we're still waiting for the governor to sign it and we get the numbers from OPM, but it, these came from the state body that does this work. We're going to get a $2,548,488,000 increase in the Alliance grant. And that's approximately $476,000 more than we were anticipating. So that, I don't want to call it found money, but that's the money we weren't anticipating through the process. So that's good news. Bad news, we'll go good news, bad news. The bad news was the excess cost reimbursement amount that's in the fund. Last year, the state had allocated $181 million and that was far short. That was causing us to get dropped to a reimbursement rate of 62%. The state, in the special action, added $40 million in. So that brought the total pool up to $221 million to be distributed to cities and towns, school districts. Out of appropriations, they added $84 million more to that. So we were very hopeful that even if all of that doesn't stay, if some of it does, our reimbursement will go up next year. But none of it stayed. So they kept the $40 million that they added, so it'll be the same, $221 million. Now we have some good news on the special ed side. This was unexpected and this is different than the money that's bonded to create in-house programs like Rose City School. That'll take effect in 2027, the second year of the budget. They created a new grant called the Special Education and Expansion Development Grant. How we know now is SEED, S-E-E-D. So they've come up with allocations for each town and it was based on the ECS formula with a 50% factor for special education, whatever that means. And it was passed in House Bill 5001. And our allocation is supposedly $599,793, so we didn't expect that. And that can only be used for special education direct expenses that educating students in-house. As the legislation says, we'll receive 25% in October, 25% in January and the balance in April. Qualifying expenses will be providing direct services to students, including tier-two interventions, academic and behavioral interventions, hiring and salaries of specialty teachers, paraeducators, behavioral reading specialists who work directly with students and equipment purchases and maintenance and curricular materials. It cannot be used for any administrative expenses in special ed. It cannot be used to pay for related services to third-party contractors or tuition payments. So the focus seems to be, we will give you grant money to provide services to special ed students. There is a caveat that if you misspend the money, you will be punished. And the punishment is $1. For every $1 of misspent money. For every $1 of misspent money, the penalty will be $2. So we need to wait till we get the rules and make sure we're in compliance. And they will also be a tie-in to your previous year's budget. So now that we have an adopted budget, I'm gonna go back and review all of these special education budgets to align them through the budget transfer process to make sure that the expenses align with the budget, so our budget isn't overstated. Do we, you know, have a favorable variance because of vacancies and things like that?
If anyone's wondering, Lisa and I have already figured out a way to spend the $599,000. The minute we heard.
So, and then I just have two more items from the legislation piece. There was a program I might have mentioned called the DRIP program, which is a district repair improvement program, which allows school districts funding to deal with the minor capital projects. You know, they, they have these school construction grant process, which builds schools. They periodically come up with security grants, HVAC grants, indoor air quality grants. Well, it seems those things are going away. And instead, they're gonna provide you this money, much like the LoSiP program works, and you'll be able to keep the money into a fund and use it for small capital projects. So right now, our budget for next year, we have $117,000 budgeted for projects. We no longer will budgeting for specific repairs because of the new schools. That money's there to fix things, like an elevator, when it goes down, heating and cooling. This could help our budget because, one, if, takes effect this year, if the bonding package really, really go out and bond it and release the rules to us. Last year, we spent $50,000 on a rooftop unit at Huntington. We wouldn't have to do that under our budget and come from these funds. And the beauty of this is, I like it the best, going forward, if this program is viable and they continue it and they bond the money every two years, if we do really get $244,000 every year, we don't have to spend it, that can be your fund for doing capital projects as you need them as the new schools age. So I think that could be a wonderful thing. But of all of these things I talked about, none of us have received any correspondence from the Department of Education. We have no guidance on how to implement them, what the rules are.
There's so much more.
Here starts in two and a half weeks. So I'm sure we're gonna be getting learning more and learn how we can spend this money.
No program was.
So overall, if we look at the budget process, we're gonna get roughly $2.5 million from ECS Alliance, another $600,000 from the SEED grant, $956,000 from the city, which is 1%. We've need staff redones. So I'm really optimistic that we're gonna be okay next year by managing all of these funding sources together at one year.
We love the DRIP. The DRIP one is the big one. Really looking forward to that one, especially when something goes wrong and I'll have Bob and Matt show up to my office door saying, we have bad news. Find money for this or that.
If I have one personal thing to happen next year is, I don't wanna talk to Susan, then we need to go with the budget freeze.
That's our goal.
We've done this three years in a row. It's discouraging for the staff. We fall behind in stopping supplies.
The staff was great. When you say the staff was great, Bob, they were, there was no complaints. They figured it out. They were great. The, the, the exact figure, Heather, is $96,637,707.
And we're happy with what we got from the city, and we can live within that budget, assuming everything goes well.
Yes.
We don't have 10 special need, high needs, special needs kids move in.
You never know what will happen.
You never know.
But we have a good plan.
Yeah, considering the plight of the city, they really don't, as it was quite enough, have a budget problem. They have a revenue. Everybody's budgets were reasonable, the Board of Ed's budget, the police department, fire department, they'd have a funding issue due to this shortfall in state government. So if we, we, I think we can optimistically make this work without conflicting pain and suffering.
Any questions for Bob?
Do we have a replacement for Lou Allen?
I believe, I'll assume, and talk to that, it's gonna be done through existing staff, through a stipend.
New stipends with three staff members, PE members, that have been working. So really, what Lou Allen's been doing for the last couple of years is knowing that he's going to leave. He's been moving two PE teachers to take over his role.
I certainly do that, okay.
Yes, so there'll be another person, so we'll be able to absorb it in the three stipends.
I would just like to say about Lou Allen, he was hired part-time, but I swear to God, that man was here every day. He really was a mentor to the students. I know firsthand that he bought things for students who didn't have money for shoes, athletic shoes. He bought them basketballs so they could practice at home, and he was generous to everyone. And I would see him at games and events, and he was more than a culture teacher. He was, you know, a real resource to parents and students, and he's gonna be missed tremendously.
And he's a quality person.
Our athletic program now, it's not just marginal, it's robust and it stacks up against any other region. So he did it incredibly, just to see the kids participate. So it's just, it's just been great.
That's why he has so many connections, maintaining those connections, you know, as far as getting coaches, that's what I hope he's passed on.
Quickly, I've taken Lou to a couple of basketball games, the Yukon Games, and he'd park a little further away. He adds five to 10 minutes to the walk because everybody knows him walking in, has to stop and talk.
Just like Johnny.
Okay, so back in college, I had Frank Ed Friedman, wore very thick glasses, so we called him Ed Specs. So without further ado, we're gonna do Ed Specs from Mike Finanza.
Good evening, everyone.
Sorry about the one way.
No, no, no problems at all. This is probably the last time we'll be visiting this group. I'm joined by one of the project managers from our office, Samantha DiAgostino. She assisted us with putting these educational specifications together. Just to give you guys a little introduction, the first phase that this board approved was the Greenville and Stanley project. Those projects have kicked off and are now underway, actually being built within the city. The Yonkers and Moriarty projects are wrapping up design. We hope to be out to bid around just after the beginning of the new year on those two projects. And the final two projects that'll be before you tonight are a new teachers' middle school and converting the old Huntington Elementary School into a central office building. Just a couple of things, and, you know, just to thank everyone from the NPS administrative team. As you review the Ed Specs, the collaboration on the teachers' middle school project was enormous. Our staff interviewed close to, there's almost an entire page of staff members that were integral to that process, as well as everything that went into central office as, as related to getting those stuff.
We can all fit it in.
Yeah, we can see it too.
What's that?
We can put it in the bottom, I'll see.
Oh, no, we just have a quick presentation together that just kind of recaps everything so that you don't have to go through that document page by page.
Thank you.
Now, you may have to hold it and describe it.
I never let it go.
It's just the, 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 right here, right?
Every time we go down.
That's okay, we can send you, we can send you a copy, but can I just? I don't know the numbers off the top of my head.
Matt, you don't need to worry about it.
It's, it's fine, I can send it out to everyone, anything can happen, so. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Sam DiAgostino. Like Mike said, I'm a project engineer, project manager with Construction Solutions Group. I have been with CSG for about five years now, and Mike asked me to assist in putting together the final drafts of the Ed Specs for you guys, for teachers and central office. So last week, we worked collectively with the NPS staff to finalize the drafts that you have presented in front of you tonight. Just a brief overview of Teachers Memorial Magnet Middle School. It's a new construction project that overbuilt on the existing site of the current teachers, correct? So in total, the current building area is a little over 71,000 square feet, and that includes areas, obviously, your academic core programs, classrooms, prep rooms, ISS, coaches' office space, in addition to all of your special ed programming, your phys ed pro, programs, food services, arts and music, library and media center, admin support spaces. And then we have two categories called building services and core area, as well as circulation and interior partitions. The building services and core area are things like your mechanical rooms, bathrooms, and that type of thing, anything that kind of services the building. Circulation and interior partitions are things like hallways, corridors, that type of thing. So that kind of, again, very brief overview of teachers. Does anyone have any questions specifically related to teachers or any clarification that they may need? I know it was quick, but.
And the reason we're building a new building as opposed to renovating the, the existing?
It, it actually benefits the city. CSG ran an analysis to, to, to look at the financial impacts to the city if we were to renovate the existing teachers' middle school or build a new school on the same site. There were a few things that were identified, you know, that you wouldn't get if you were to renovate a building there. You know, you wouldn't get a dedicated bus drop-off and parent drop-off area, you know. A large portion of the analysis revolved around the fact that the current teachers' middle school is larger than what's needed to support the enrollment within the district. And it's not as simple as a one-line analysis that you can make. So you can't just say, we have an 80,000-square-foot building, we're just gonna take, you know, 15,000 square feet of the building away, because it may not be practical to do that. So, you know, and in looking at that analysis, even with the existing building, because of some ADA compliance issues that it has, you know, you would still need to build towers on the existing building for the stairs, is one example. The stairs aren't currently compliant to st, to current codes. The elevator isn't large enough in the existing building to meet current codes. So when we started looking at all of that, as well as the fact that I believe the auditorium and gymnasium are on the lowest level with no elevator service down there, it became kind of problematic to reutilize that building, knowing that it needed to be smaller than what it was. So one thing for everyone to understand is that if you renovate a building that's larger than what you need, the state actually lowers your reimbursement rate as a result because you're renovating space that isn't supported by your enrollment. And because of that, that one-to-one analysis that I made, that I was just discussing, you know, if we were at an 88,000-square-foot building, and that's approximately what it is now, we can't just say, we need to remove 17,000 square feet of the building and take it in one fell swoop. It just doesn't work that way. So as part of our analysis, by right-sizing the building, building a new building, the state does offer a 10% reimbursement bonus when you reutilize an existing structure. Even with the extra bonus, because of the square footage that would be additional or unneeded to support the educational program, the cost to the taxpayers in the City of Norwich was higher to renovate the building than it was to build a new building. So it almost became a no-brainer for the city to go that direction. That was something that was presented a couple of months ago to the school building committee, and ultimately, the decision was made to go with a new building there versus renovating what was currently there.
And it was quite a significant difference. It was $20, $25 million.
It was close to, to a $2 million variance, if I remember off the top of my head, as to, as to what the value would be that you would, the, the additional cost you would incur to renovate versus build new.
But that was without the, that was at the standard reimbursement rate without the additional up to 80% that we're getting on the rest of the project.
Right, right. So you would, so basically, a new construction project based on the city's current reimbursement rate, 67.14%, if you were to build new. The state will give you a 10% bonus on the reimbursement rate if you are to repurpose an existing building. But then, when you factor in the fact that repurposing that existing building, it would be repurposed with additional square footage that, that isn't supported by the enrollment, then that lowers the overall reimbursement rate to lower than the 67.14% that you would basically get to build new. So then that's where the variance ended up being, and, and it ended up being a better deal, based on the analysis for the city to build new versus renovating what was there.
But that, that was at the 67% rate, not counting that we hopefully would get the 80% reimbursement.
Correct, correct, yes. If, if, if the 80% is acknowledged for the project, it would be 80% in, it would be 80% total. So, you know, it definitely has an impact.
And you have a question on teachers? Okay, so Huntington is a little bit different than teachers in the sense that it's an existing school that's going to be converted to a central office space. And Mike can probably speak a little bit better to the rationale behind some areas getting altered versus some areas not getting altered. But what you'll notice in the Ex specs for this one in particular is, if you go into the space matrix portion, there's some areas that are highlighted in green versus red. The green areas indicate areas that are gonna be considered as part of the alteration project, converting Huntington to central office. Whereas the red areas are areas that are still gonna remain intact within the building, but will not receive any upgrades or alterations as part of the project. So we had, we had to include all the areas because they're gonna be, obviously, maintained once the alteration project is complete, they're still gonna be active. So we just wanted to show what those delineations were.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can speak to this. So, so essentially, what, what's happening at that building is you're converting a full-fledged school into a central office. And as part of that renovation, there's a lot more offices than you would typically have in a school. We surveyed the NPS administrative team, everything that's gonna go in there. So, you know, as part of a central office component, you have superintendent, assistant superintendent offices, facilities department, finance, HR, payroll, and I'm not gonna be able to remember all the time off.
Adult, adult education.
Yeah, there's also a major adult education component of this project, which was voted on by the voters of Norwich, as part of the referendum, so we had to service those spaces as well. But, you know, the altered spaces within the building are mostly the offices and the adult education department. I, I will say that the, the alterations that'll be needed in the adult education component of it will be a little easier than the conversions that'll be needed to facilitate offices being built. Basically, an adult education classroom is the same as a general classroom, but the classroom would get refur, refurbished and altered as needed to support the adult education program in there. But the fact that you're already utilizing a classroom where students were taught, you don't have to put up new walls, you don't have to, you know, re, reorganize rooms that are currently in place.
Mike, I just wanna add one thing. We did talk about including the Norwich Traditional Academy, but speaking with Lisa, once we all sat down together, it didn't make any sense to move that program from the current spot at KESG to this, to Huntington.
And I also, just to add one more thing for the building services and core area, it's my understanding that the bathrooms and the corridors and things like that are still in relatively good shape, so that's why they're not being altered as part of the alteration project.
Well, to Samantha's point, we'll go in and investigate then any type of improvements that need to be made. We don't feel that there's a lot that'll need to be made. The bathrooms are generally in very good condition within that building. They look like they've been renovated very recently. More so the back portion of the building where the new addition had gone on. Um, more so the back portion of the building where the new addition had gone on. Um, that that space is almost pristine. Uh, and to think that it's even twenty years old is difficult to even think about because it just looks so new. Um, you know, but to to Samantha's point about the areas that aren't in the alteration project, uh, there was the desire to keep the gymnasium at Huntington as a community gym, at least initially, because it services a portion of the city where there's no other facilities that are as close by as Huntington. So, we left the gymnasium at Huntington intact. The Parks and Rec Department currently utilizes that school more than a lot of the others in the district. I think that'll more than likely change once the first four elementary schools come on board because now we'll have full-sized gymnasiums, whereas we may, may not have previously. Um, and the other area that was, that was uh requested and desirable to keep was the kitchen. Um, that's also a newer space. It's in both the kitchen and the kitchen. The gymnasium serves as a cafeteria, an auditorium, and a gymnasium, gym, a cafeteria. You know, and a lot of uh school building projects are going away from that because there's obviously benefits to having those spaces separated. Uh, but given the example here at Huntington, you have a perfectly good gymnasium. Uh, if if it's maintained intact and it eventually gets used as a gymnasium, it's already working as a gymnasium. The kitchen is already working as a kitchen and services kids for for lunch and breakfast, I would imagine. And, you know, going forward, it was kind of desirable to keep that kitchen intact so that if any community events needed to happen or food needed to be prepared in that building, it could be accommodated.
Well, you you could serve the the central office staff and have it available for for sale for uh students attending the uh adult education programs, both day and evening.
We do summer meals there as well.
In summer meals.
That, that would be up to the district as far as whether or not the adult education program is serviced by meals. I, I, you know, we, through the programming, I don't believe that adult education is is a program where the the students involved in that program.
Well, not now, because there is no kitchens at the, the existing facility. So I'm saying it's possible to add that into those services i- in the future.
If you wanted to, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's something that we should really talk about, too. Because if, if food service becomes something that then gets offered to adult education, the space may need to be classified differently or altered to be able to service.
Yeah, Bob, do we still have a prep kitchen that we use for um like local pr- produce and stuff?
Um, no, that, not yet. That has to be reinstated. We have to renew the license.
So that's a possibility for that kitchen at Hun- at Huntington to possibly take?
No, we, we, no, we would do that at the moment of the existing new schools. That would be the plan.
All right.
And one of the reasons we don't wanna take the kitchen out is, once it's out, it's never going back in. Uh, and it's hard, it's easy to keep it for potential use for summer meals, for adult ed, for NTA might have graduation there, and you could serve a nice catered meal there, so it it's space that doesn't need to be demoed, so why do it?
And because it doesn't fit directly in the program, that's why it's not being altered. Because there's no, you need to have rationale for altering it. If it, if it was needed for the program, we would be able to alter it. But, you know, in this case, we're keeping an existing asset that's there. Um, one component that we didn't mention is that more than likely, there will be some space that goes unused within that building. It's almost, I think, our total program area came out at forty-four thousand and change, you know, almost forty-five thousand square feet. So there will be portions of the building that won't be altered at all or even used in the final rendition of 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 the central office project per se. So, you know, there, there is, there will be space that will be in that building, that will be untouched, um, that could remain intact or be potentially used for other things. It's just, you know, to stay within the budget and and the amount that the referendum approved, we had to really go off of what spaces were directly in the referendum. And, and that's why we took the path as we did, as it relates to that building.
Silly question, but under this, um, the specs for um one special education records room, a lockable floor drawer filing cabinets. I'm just curious as to why those aren't, um, the fire-rated ones. I know that they're expensive, but, but that's still records room.
Oh, we, usually.
I see you have them in the other.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they're not fire-rated. Typically, we don't usually get that specific with filing cabinets, once we get to design.
Well, it is listed, you know, on on um, for like the education, so administrative assistant has a lock, lockable one.
Fire-rated?
Yeah, they're all fire-rated, except for the ones in the records room.
They're, they're, they're generally indicative spaces and narratives, you know. This is a really preliminary document in that, don't, don't feel that you're, you're more or less limited to the spaces that were provided in there, but not the amenities. There's still gonna be, there's still gonna be a full-fledged design and, you know, to what, to, you know, Susan or team.
I would just make note of that, that's something that should be brought up because I would think, because it says eight-lockable floor drawer filing cabinets. And I know from my own experience in education that we always had the fireproof ones, you know, in the records rooms.
Yeah, and and Christine, just to put your mind at ease a little bit as it relates to that. When, so there'll be a full-fledged design similar to what we did first in, in Greenville, and then another phase component that'll select all the furniture for all the spaces as well, so. Um, definitely something we'll be able to capture further on in the project. Also, just, you know, one other thing to mention is that, you know, at, in particular, with the, with the special education spaces in there, we did receive some feedback from uh the NPS administrative team, and there, there was a lot of uh back and forth to get the space to what we felt, or the administrative team felt was needed to support a good work in central office.
Um, so if there's no other questions for central office, I just wanted to add that the goal is to get a grant application for both of these projects submitted by June thirtieth of this year. Um, so as long as the ed specs are approved tonight, um, and then we get the minutes, I believe, certified, we can continue with the re- rest of the items for the grant application. But these ed specs are a critical piece in getting those grant applications submitted by June thirtieth.
And just back to teachers, um, the, the word is, it's not, it's not observatory, is it? Uh, where they have the?
Oh, the.
Oh, planetarium, yeah. Or was there, was that part of the ed spec for teachers that exist in space?
To be honest with you, I don't recall if the planetarium was ever desired to be incorporated back into the, or into the program.
That's a question. It's not, it's not part of the new ed specs.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money. I don't think if you're ever went to a newly renovated buil- or not renovated, but a new school building in middle school or high school, they don't, they just don't do those anymore. They're, I mean, you look at what the debacle over East Line they had, they weren't even gonna do that. Someone took over it, and they, but it's an existing building right now at High School, so.
Plus, we haven't used it for how long? I mean, it just started.
No, we're using it now.
No, I mean, yeah, right. Now we are, but it wasn't used for a while.
Yeah, but there's new projectors in the.
Yeah, I know, but that's what I'm saying, it wasn't.
So, I mean, to give up that program.
So we did without, and then we started using it again, right? There's new projectors, though, you hate to have those go to waste.
Yeah, I'm not sure, we could talk about that.
So I'm sorry, what?
We have to talk about that, it's a good question.
Well, we're approving the ed specs tonight, so that's.
No, she's talking, no, I'm talking about the existing alternative usage.
Is there a planetarium in this building?
No.
No, that's the only.
So, educational. That's the only planetarium district wide.
And I'm not exactly positive is the reason that it came out, but educational parity could be one of the reasons why it came out. You know, one of the big things from the school building committee, as well as, you know, I believe this committee, was that educational parity was, uh, you know, thought of in the design of all these buildings. So that could potentially be one of them.
I think it was more the cost.
Okay.
Because that wouldn't really matter to to us, because I believe we would just ship students.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Was that ever discussed in pol- in uh planning sessions?
They did, so when they had everybody in there, um, there was somebody that from, um,
CSG.
CSG that went in, who was a staff member and spoke with every science teacher or every math teacher.
We have an educational specialist that came in and met with the district. And if you go into the educational specifications for teachers, we actually provide a list of names of all of the teachers and staff members that were in.
It was just about every staff member.
It's a, it's a pretty encompassing list.
And if they, if they has a planetarium, they'll use it in the beginning of the day.
They, why do you know they have them?
Yeah, on top of the, the top of the trans.
Yeah.
And it's usable, it's, it's used.
So maybe we could partner with another neighborhood, more kids.
Well, is it planetarium or an observatory?
Planetarium.
Oh, okay, that's the planetarium.
It could be, no trip that would work out, but, but they, so.
All right. So, dollar-wise, do you remember offhand what, how much more did that add into the project?
I don't have that information.
All right. But it would, it must have been a significant amount.
I, I imagine so.
They don't buil- they don't build planetariums anymore. Like, when we talked about East Line, when I went to East Line, that planetarium was there. So it's been, it's been there since the seventies.
Yeah, the teachers.
I didn't go when I was in the seventies, just so you know.
That's an old, such an old planetarium.
I did not go when it was seventies.
I, I uh, when I graduated, Lime Old Lime High School, which received a uh major renovation a couple of years back, and I remember through the, that that project, they had a planetarium at that school as well. We weren't ever allowed to even go into the planetarium because of safety concerns. And then, you know, ultimately, the, the planetarium was up on a roof level and the vibration from the HVAC units would shake the telescope, and we weren't able to even really use it, so. And I, I can tell you from, you know, personal experience, I've never been a part of a school building project that added a uh a planetarium.
Uh, this is kind of a question for Susan. If we are going region with pre-K, are we going to need these positions?
Which positions are?
Like the administrative assistant to the pre-K director.
Oh, yes, well, this is still, yes, we're still going to, um, need them in the schools.
Will we keep all that? Just curious.
Good question, but yes, we'll still leave them for a pre-K. We have one point five right now for a pre-K.
So, anyone have any questions for, for Mike, for, on the ed specs for either project for teachers or um the new off, central office at Huntington?
I just want everybody to know, too, is that we had all of central office, um, involved in, when we went over for the specs. We made sure everybody had a say in the spots we, Matt Brown like measured every space that we use now so that we could make sure that the, the square meters matched what we needed.
So, we would be able to move the entire central office IT, whoever, in, every single.
Every single, everyone at Bishop, at Ninety-Town Street, adult ed. The only thing, the only thing that won't be moving from Bishop is the Royal City School, which Royal City School will eventually go into Veterans, which we're gonna have to talk with the city manager in the coming weeks about that, when that goes offline.
And Huntington has facility space, like a repair shop for equipment, too, now, or?
Yes, there's a maintenance shop as part of the, part of the ed specs. That was a request from Matt Brown. You have a facility storage area, office space for that, his assistant, um.
For computer repair and?
There's actually an IT department that would have computer repair.
So Veterans, we are looking into, which we think, we've talked to the city manager, talked to the mayor, we're gonna move, eventually we'll move City School to Veterans as it expands. So once Veterans goes offline, it's one floor, and it's in a perfect location, um, for a program that will, when Bishop would do. Bishop would go back to the city. I know that, I know that there's talk of using that building, I know Sheila Hee has brought up using that building as a youth center. That's what you would love to see going there.
Who brought that out?
Sheila Hee has brought it up that that would be a perfect spot, once that goes offline.
Veterans?
No, Bishop.
Bishop.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so essentially Bishop Mahan, um, will Veterans, we have plans for La Quanic, um.
That's it, that would go offline.
That would go offline. And adult ed.
Hickory Street.
Hickory Street.
Right, pre-K would be in, obviously, pre-K, like Christine was looking at, we're going to Huntington, the, there's some staffing that we're doing.
And right now, the, the BMT program at Kid Street instead.
That states, yes.
CNA class street listed.
It's adult ed.
But we're going to, we're gonna keep it, that's right, I'm thinking of the transition.
Yeah, no, it's part of the adult base.
Okay, uh, if, having no questions, uh, we'll entertain a motion for uh the, we're gonna do two motions, uh, under ten, um, ten-one.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Norwich Board of Education to approve the educational specifications for teachers' global magnet middle school state project.
So Christine D'Stacio will second that.
Okay, any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, um, all in favor?
Aye.
I, it is unanimous. Uh, just, uh, it'll, that's eight-zero, because Kevin left the meeting. Um, and I'll entertain a motion on ten-two for the ed specs for um the Huntington Central Office project.
I'm making a motion to authorize the Norwich Board of Education to approve the educational specifications for the Norwich Central Office State Project.
I'll second.
What a tongue twister.
Got it.
It's a multiple. Okay, any further discussion on that matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I, again, unanimous. And that's, does it for ed specs.
Thank you very much.
What do you need for the grant application?
I'll work, I'll work with Amber to get, to get the information. We'll just need a certified copy from the recording secretary, and I'll, we don't.
Because I, I don't know what you need, uh, in approval. I, I think in the past, we did approval of the, the final minutes.
It all depended on when the, the, the meeting fell. So I think the first round, we did in June, and we needed an approv- an approved set prior to June thirtieth, so there was no chance for another meeting to happen because of a similar situation to this. But we've worked with Amber, we know what to do, we'll get the certified copies, and we'll be off and running.
All right, so, yeah, if, if we need another special meeting to just within the minutes, uh.
I, I don't anticipate that you're gonna need an extra special meeting to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Takes us to item eleven, non-finished business, uh, okay, we have several policies for second. New business, uh, oh.
No, we still have student retention policy.
Student retention policy, okay, I'm sorry.
Where was the approval of the budget, like?
It's, that's the round. We just skipped one, ten point three.
That's eleven, that's unfinished business.
Oh, okay.
It's okay, it's okay, you were until.
It's been a long day.
My, my mind, a very long day today. I did three graduations this morning, morning and afternoon, too. Okay, um, yeah, Christine called me to have a discussion about student retention policy. So, you wanna take the lead on that, Christine?
Well, I think that we seriously need to consider, um, uh, at, looking at it closely and possibly with retention in kindergarten. Um, so that our kids have, get that strong, well, let me start with I. Uh, sitting at graduations today, wondering if we have done everything we can as a board to give our students the best foundation possible, or passing on kids lacking proficiency in reading and math, and are struggling with social development is going to always hold them back from being successful academically. I ask that the subject of retention be added to our, our agenda because I have true concerns, as many of our community do, when I hear students from NPS, starting at NF Bay and at, and other high schools, requiring remedial classes or assistance with reading and or math. when I hear students from NPS, starting at NFA and at, and other high schools, requiring remedial classes or assistance with reading and or math. And I was curious as to, but Jamie doesn't have the scores yet, how many of the kids that we graduate today even weren't proficient in math and our reading? I've had a discussion with one of our longtime kindergarten teachers, and there were several concerns. I was told, I guess when Abby was still our superintendent, retention was done, of course, after extremely close analysis, you know, looking at everything. And then, when Kristen came in, she handed that over to Tamera Gloucester, and Tamera wouldn't entertain it at all. They, the teachers would get together, all the information that they needed to justify it, and it wasn't entertained at all. They were totally ignored. And this is coming from, I said, experienced teachers. So, and that was when parents were on board, because of course, a parent has to be on board with this. And so, I'm just, and at, at the kindergarten level, that's when there's less stigma, so to speak, with being held back. And it's just a huge concern, because I'm, I'm embarrassed at times when I hear, oh, look at how many kids at NFA are struggling or, or that seventy percent of the admissions at Three Rivers needed remedial reading. And it's like, isn't there something more that we can give these kids more time at the, at the young, the level, to give them a stronger start?
Stronger foundation.
So, so having no life.
Pardon?
Having no life, which would be me.
Being retired.
Being retired.
Yes, and has a life.
When I saw that, I had an interest in this, and I have had an interest in this. And I've done a lot of reading, and I've sent articles to folks about the research and what's happened. And there's a trend, and it has been for the last probably seven years, of retention policy at the end of the third grade.
I can't hear you.
At the end of the third.
I'm sorry, John, he'll pick up just a little bit.
I will. At the end of the third grade.
Right.
And we've spoken in here an awful lot about age three to grade three, which kind of ties into where we should be focusing. And you know a lot about this, age three and grade three. And a lot, there are states that have, that have laws that students have to test because their, their retention is based upon a standardized test score when they move to the fourth grade. So research is out, and what is it said? Good or bad? It says both.
Yeah, it depends what study you read.
And there are studies that will tell, that, that studies will say, it's not all about retention. It's about what happens with that X for you. In a lot of places where they retain students, they have ninety minutes a day on reading, it's only based on reading, not math, just reading. About ninety minutes a day. What does that turn into? State of Mississippi, so listen to this, State of Mississippi. And I have a cousin who is in the education department in State of Mississippi. They have found there's an absolute difference in the next reading test, which is in the sixth grade. They see, they see a significant, I would have the numbers, improvement in that. Does it carry on after that? Don't know. Retaining people in the middle school, forget about it. Sixty, sixty percent of students retaining in the middle school drop to high school, period. So, my opinion is if you're serious about age three to grade three, this kind of ties into what we need to look at, and how we need to look at. And it is, I'm looking at a year's study, and this from a board that's doing this, and after this school year, because budgetary concerns, staffing concerns, class size, there's a whole margin of things. But if we do a study, and we do the research, and we go visit places, and talk to people, and find out, is this something that can help the students acknowledge public schools, we need to look at it, if you understand. We may do all that and say, you know what? Really isn't worth it. Maybe it means we need more tutoring, and we need more. Yeah, maybe it means that, I don't know. But I don't want to discount retention as not being a solution, a something. And I don't know if it fits the answer or not.
I don't know. Well, that's the thing, because we haven't had any recent studies, you know, and we haven't had any.
There are a lot of them out there.
Well, we have a. Oh, yeah, but I mean, you don't know what the population is that they're looking at for upside. I'm sure some of the ones you read did say, get the, you know, SESs and that, et cetera, et cetera, of the population.
Any research that's out there gives you all that information, gives you all the demographics, gives you all the data, so it's more than just the numbers. How does it affect this population? In the Mississippi, the high winners, okay, are minority students, high winners, surprise, right? But the high winners, so, you know, I, I spout my mouth too much, but, but I'm in favor of, of not saying we're gonna do it. I'm in favor of looking in, seeing a year away, is it something we should look at? That's all.
So we do have a policy.
We do.
Dr. Hughes, Dr. Hughes and Jamie Bender are the ones who speak with the parents, and we have retained the students. And if you look at the Yukon retention after COVID nineteen, evidence-based guidance, this was December first, twenty twenty one, pretty recent. COVID nineteen pandemic changed the way school districts reach, educate, evaluate, and support students. Historically, grade retention has been a common way for school districts to address low achievement and high absenteeism. Research is clear, grade retention has no long-term benefits for student achievement or long-term outcomes, and may in fact have negative consequences for both students and districts. So the research that I've seen, and I'm open to look at a lot of different research, is that we see it, and we go, oh, wow, they went to first grade, look how well they're doing. But what we don't see is what they look like when they get into fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. They don't see that. And that's when the negative effects start to occur. So I feel the same way as John, I'm glad he brought this up, Christine, because I think that it's important for us to look at. I do think, when you see the data, I saw some really good kindergarten grades, dibbles, really good.
I've seen some good third grade students. And I just think too, that what, what Florida's done with our early education, school readiness, having a strong school readiness program really helps us with kindergarten, what they need to do, and we're targeting more SOVI by third grade. I teach there in fourth graders, and I just know that I don't expect them to come to me in third grade, but it's significantly, they're going to achieve fifth and sixth. So we've looked at, we've been tracking data over like six years, even six before COVID. That early, the kids that went to early, you know, had two years of preschool, kind of solid, I think that's where it's gonna start.
And I think you see, NFA, Christine, when you talk about, those are the kids that were having the effect of the COVID, unfortunately.
Right, and that's, I, I just want, I looked up some interesting stats on like SAT scores from our juniors and our seniors, and the decline in the last ten years. Do you know that Connecticut's average score is under a thousand for an SAT? That's embarrassing. That's, that's the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, it is, and I'll tell you that when I've talked to Nick Cannell about it, is that he, he feels that it's a lot to do not with how much knowledge they have, but the way they, they take the, the effort that they put into taking the SAT. They don't, they don't, they don't feel like they need, they need to put a lot of effort into it.
Well, so it's a lot, a lot of coaches are not using the SATs.
Right, no, but it was just a standard to see that it drastically went down, and if it continues on that trend, it's going down like a hundred and fifty to two hundred points every year. That's like, that's a horrible line, and that's why I feel like, and I'm a mom of four kids. I know how important it is, those basic foundations, that they learn, and we have to just make sure of that, because it's much easier with them being socially ready to stay, I mean, socially staying that is not going to affect them in kindergarten. It would, if we break the phone, we need to make sure we're, we're staying on top of it, because there's too many kids that are slipping through the cracks, and I know we can do better.
There's been a while to obviously, as a teacher, that schools were using one way to teach reading, and we've gone back to the science of reading. The last three years, I've done a lot of work on it, a lot of studies, and it's picking up, we're spot, and it's for teaching a different way of reading again, back to the other. I think there's a big group of kids, I think there's a lot of teachers college there, we thought was so great, and we worked into it for a very long time. In Norway, a lot of places were, everybody, everybody went to teachers college, I spent weeks there. And looking at the science of reading is a much different, very dynamic experience, a much longer way to look at it, the science of writing. And having actors.
Oh, totally.
But the way kids were being taught like that high school age at that point, plus COVID, I think they're too late.
I just think.
They're back to writing science history, you know.
And then I wanted to add one, to just ask who I would talk to, I know it's not the curriculum, but why, why do we not teach cursive? And is that something that maybe we, as a school district, could possibly add? Because our founding documents of our country are in cursive, and these children cannot read them. How are they supposed to protect themselves, stand up for their rights, and one, know how to sign their name? I realized it when I, they might get into the DMP, and he has no clue how to sign his name. And I'm standing there in the DMP, like, I know I taught you how to sign your name a long time ago, but. So I wanted to, I mean, I'm having a literacy class at my house this summer for some of the high school students, because they're gonna be at our project, we'll turn it that way, and they can at least learn the basic cursive letters.
I think the problem is fitting in in the curriculum of cursive too, the research about cursive, and where would we find it? We have just about, we try to cram in reading and writing as much as we can and to add cursive.
But cursive is part of writing, and it's part of being an adult, and we're supposed to be raising kids that are gonna function well in society when they get out. How are they supposed to?
Stakers now all go towards textbooks, maybe use a computer, be able to make documents. Only thing you need to use cursive, and I want us to sign their name. But I can tell you, my third grader.
And to read the document.
She can write her whole spelling sentence in cursive, she writes her whole, all her whole class person last names.
Okay, but that's not all students, that's.
Her whole class is going to use cursive.
Then that's at, like, not in Norwich, they, they.
She's in Norwich.
She's in Norwich now, right?
She learned at Norwich, she's in third grade in Norwich.
Okay, so then in Norwich, there is, obviously, if they're in one school or getting it, and there's five other schools, you're not getting it, there's a problem. All I'm saying is that even though tech is, everything is moving tech, we also have to learn and realize that when we started putting kids in remote and doing all these things on tech and computers, and now with AI, they're using AI, plagiarizing, writing things, like the things that we need to educate their brain, that's basics. They need to know how to work these things out if the computer and tech goes down. They need to know how to work things out. I work in a restaurant, when the restaurant power goes out, we have to sit there, we have to figure out how much those checks are, add the tax, make sure the stuff got paid, or we weren't, we were going home with no money. If these kids have computers go down, I fear they're not going to be, know how to function. And we all need to know how to function without tech. We need the basics.
So I think it's another discussion.
And maybe we even have a school program where we have cursive being taught or something.
Think we look at the research and, and talk about it, and certainly if it's happening at one school and not other schools, that's.
I just wanted to mention that.
I'll make a comment about the student retention policy. From what I see and I'm noticing is that we have a policy in place that allows for promotion and retention. And if you look at the procedures that are around it, I think they're pretty well thought out. And so the discussion we're having is about, I think, are we being too strict or too loose on how it's happening, how it's going? And that's where I'm, I'm gonna go back to what John said before, is that we really should be looking at what's our practice here in Norwich when it comes to retention? What are the practices in other places? How successful are they with that? And then we can make decisions about guidance towards, you know, we should be retaining more students and why, that's the case. Because the process to me looks really good. I wouldn't recommend any changes to the process based on what I'm reading there. There can be great benefits to retention for a number of students, maybe because replacing students in school based upon their chronological age. But there's also a lot of studies that that's not really the best measurement of someone's maturity. I mean, if we're replacing students in school based on their size, it might even be a more accurate way of telling you how ready are they to learn or do whatever they're doing, and not necessarily their age. So you might have students who are very young, and you see this with the, you know, change in the policy for kindergartners having to be of the age five. I have a son who was a late year birthday, who did kindergarten twice, and just for him, I'm not saying this is for everybody, it was a big benefit. He transferred from one school to another school, and was able to enroll in kindergarten second time around. And he's very small, he was very young, and so not just academically, but also socially, there were benefits for him. Where he, unlike me, being the smallest kid coming into ninth grade, wasn't the smallest kid coming into ninth grade, because he's a little bit older instead of being younger than everybody else. So I think really what we need to do is just kind of take a look at, how are we doing this within our district? And like the comment that you mentioned, it was happening at one point, and then it seemed like it wasn't happening at all, and I think we're trying to find a balance now. And if we see that there's issues with that balance, let's talk about where we want the balance to be.
There was, there was a time in North Park schools, there was called Developmental Kindergarten.
Yes.
I think that's a lot of different schools.
My child, my.
Your grandchild.
But we, we had both of our children go through the belt, DK and then regular K, both of them. And my daughter really didn't need it, my son is a smaller, you know, whatever.
Are they called transitional K now?
Yes.
Yeah, and, 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 but again, that, that takes us back to that whole concept of, I keep saying, we need to age, we need to age.
Well, what do you think about this though?
What do you think about this though, when, when the law changes, not next year, but the year after, where you have to be five, before that might change a lot?
It, it is gonna change a lot, because when you're putting kids that.
They're not ready.
They're not ready, so.
That way you're putting major things changing.
I know, I know, like for my sister, my, my sister has that late birthday, and my mom fought to have her start early. And she started early, and she's had trouble since the second grade fitting in with her peers, getting the score she needed, passing things, and everyone knows where my sister's not doing so well. So I feel that if, if maybe she had waited and was in the right, from the beginning, she would have had a better chance of being successful. Like me, I'm a summer, I'm a June baby, and have a problem. I'm like nine five.
Five and a half.
Yeah, I was an old one.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I, I think it's, it's the individual child, you know, I had, most of them went to kindergarten at five, one then went at four. You know, the, the one that went at four has a college degree, the one that went at five could not go to college. So I, I think it's really that individual child, and where would that child fall? So if they need that extra help, that extra assistance, we have those things in, in place. We, we have, you know, the reading programs, we have pre-K and then K. So I, I think we have a process in place. I think we just need to find where the individual child fits in that process, to make sure that they're not left behind. Or to make sure that we're not putting a kid in, in a situation where they need to have a little bit higher academic rigor so that they don't get bored with school, you know, and then you've got the other side of the spectrum where now school's boring, this is too easy for me. So I, you know, I think there's a lot that, that has to go into thinking about.
Enrichment's another thing. We need to be challenging our kids.
We need to have something to challenge our kids that are succeeding, because the easiest way to learn, that removes that desire to, to learn, is to not be challenged. You get bored in school, and it happened to my older son, he was one of the top students in elementary school up into fourth grade. And all of a sudden, in fifth grade, he was bored, 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 and then he wasn't paying attention, and all of a sudden, and he has no clue what's going on, because he didn't pay attention anymore. He lost that drive to learn. And now I see my ten year old, who everyone here has met, he's pretty like an eighty year old man. He is wise and smart beyond his years, but I fear that the same thing's gonna happen to him, because I hear this is a kid that never wanted to miss school, and I was like, do I really need to go? What, what, so I can watch this person have temper tantrum in class for an hour? That's, like, he wants to learn. And he's, he doesn't feel like going to school for the eight hours is beneficial to him, you know? And I feel that there's a lot of kids that are, that are feeling like that, and when, once we lose them, it's very, very hard to get them back into that. How was this one I said earlier, we're talking about the absenteeism rates in that phase?
In that phase, a big bull into it, like, your four kids, oh, now you've been showing up?
You can't teach them, they don't show up.
Well, that's the thing, because I heard preschool attendance was, wasn't very good at all.
It's not really that great.
Right, and it's like, and yet we're using that as a precursor, you know?
It's getting better, this year it did get better.
Yeah, because that's what I mean, you know, you want to take advantage of it, if that's what, why we have it, to build that foundation, but it doesn't sound like a lot of people are like taking it for granted.
So even if they're not chronic and they still miss fifteen days, it's a, and then if you think about it, the teacher misses ten days and the student misses fifteen days, if they're the same...
Oh, yeah.
They're missing twenty-five days. So I think that Jamie and I are in, we're in conversation with one another on how we could ramp up chronic absenteeism by maybe, maybe it's another level to central office to talk to parents when they, they're missing.
That doesn't work, because I hate, I hate, I doubt we could do it, especially with this state funding. But say, look, if your child misses a certain amount of days, we're going to give the slot to somebody else, you know, because...
I think Cory has done that in certain situations, but I'll, I'll, she has, right?
She has, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think parents are, are looking at pre-K more as opportunistic daycare as opposed to an educational opportunity.
That's what we said, right?
Childcare, and it sucks, because I was a mom, I was a single mom, and I needed childcare before and after school. But, I hate to sound like a jerk, but this is public education, we are to educate kids, we're not babysitters. We have kids, we have kids, I have to find my own, I have to find my, I have to figure it out for my own family. And I know that things are hard, but there are programs out there that help with childcare for all kinds of low-income families, you can get it.
Well, I think pre-K should be used both, like, to, to the students that will learn, and also for moms to go to work, if they need to work.
Yes, and there's also a caution against academic rigor for pre-K and kindergarten.
They should be playing.
Yes.
It needs to play, socialize and learn.
Our countries are keeping their kids...
Well, it's not the story, you know?
Because she provides.
Because she provides.
Yeah.
Because boys just learn differently, and they need that kind of activity.
All right, let's sort of wrap up this discussion, where do we go from here?
What I want, what I wanted to just say was that I, I want, I need to know that when our teachers have children, that they feel should be held back, and they have to prove, I'm saying like in kindergarten, they need to be listened to, and I'm hearing that they're not. I'm hearing that they're not even given the time of day. To the point that, to the point that they didn't even submit any names like this year, because...
So we have, so I would want to know that, you know, that they don't want to be...
Well, it's one, and I heard that, I was like...
So Lisa, and when Jamie comes back, Lisa will have a conversation with Jamie?
Yeah.
And talk about that.
Yeah, well, that's why they went there, if they're not being timed a day.
Well, I will tell you that Jamie and I have had some conferences at the schools with...
That's why it hasn't even gotten to that point, it sounds like, it was some...
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
Well, that's what I mean, that might be like above your, I mean, below where you are at in the chain of what happens, you know what I mean? Where you might just not even be aware of it, you know? And that's my concern, because that's not...
Well, certainly teachers need to be listened to.
Exactly.
If teachers have a concern, they should at least be listened to, so we'll definitely get into that.
So, do we need to take any action or propose anything?
Well, I think it definitely needs to be looked at, I, I agree with everything John's... No, no, action, I think it needs to be scrutinized.
I think maybe we can all look at, we'll look into some more data and try to...
Well, I think we should, we need to learn data. Right, no, Greg brought up a good point, that it's in place and we need to follow it more.
So it's just to make the administration aware that there are possibly some problems out there, and keep an eye on that.
So I trust that you're going to look into this, and you're going to try to find out who are the teachers who are making these concerns, and then make sure that they're heard and listened to, and that may prop some changes.
I appreciate this conversation, so definitely...
And I will continue not to have a life, and I'll find...
Well, but you've taught, like, everybody in the past fifty years, so you're like, you know?
We just had a couple...
A lot of life in those years.
There's a lot of concerns that we need to keep track of, like evaluations.
I, I, I heard...
I'm sorry, what did you just say, Chris?
There's a lot, we just had two, that family's wanted their check, but there's a lot to get through to be retained with child back, by their scores, by a lot of different things.
And I know one thing was talking about the cost of retention, but what's the cost of having a student being special ed?
Agreed, that's why I didn't, I didn't even mention that, because...
Yeah, that's why I saw that, I'm like, what?
All right, dudes, so...
Much time.
Thank you.
I, I know they, in Iran, they just reported, they dug up the tomb of Hethuzila on his tombstone, they said, I was taught by John Ibeen.
You're starting already, John, you're starting already.
Yeah, someday you guys will be there.
Bumbed, so.
I'm already there, so.
I'm not teaching any of it, anyway.
All right, so no action, but keep an eye on it, okay. Next item, eleven-one, our action on the, the budget. So the, um... The city council passed the budget last night, and we have the figure here in the motion. Could we have a motion to approve the budget for, I mean, we already approved the budget that we submitted to the city, but now we have to approve this motion for the new budget figure that we're going to live with for the next year.
I'll make a motion for the board to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six words public schools budget in the amount of ninety-six million, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars.
We have a second, okay. Any discussion on the matter? All right, um, do we need to do a voice vote, I mean, an individual vote or, um...
No.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, okay, very good. Uh, next, the, the, the second reads on the policies as outlined, um... If I could have a motion on the first, uh, eleven-two?
Are we going through these one at a time, or are we going...
Well, no, they're, they're sort of grouped together, so I think there's three motions that we...
Yeah.
So three motions, one for each group.
Correct.
Uh, I'll make a motion for the board to approve new policies, number one thousand six, naming and renaming school facilities, one thousand seven, school security and safety, five thousand eight, restored practices response policy, and five thousand one hundred and twelve series, oh, sorry, five thousand one hundred and twelve, Connecticut school climate policy.
Pretty little second.
Okay, any discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, uh, eleven-three, could I have a motion, please?
A motion to approve, to approve the proposed revisions to existing policies, number one thousand, visitors and observations in the schools, uh, number four thousand one hundred and eighteen, dot, uh, dot one-one-two, Title IX personnel, number four thousand one hundred and eighteen, dot one-one-two, Title IX personnel, red line version. These are not, those are just one policy, four thousand one hundred and eighteen, dot one-one-two.
Yeah, Christina.
Yep, they're just two different versions of them. Number five-one-four-five-point-five, the Title IX students proposing version, and five-five-four-oh, transportation.
This is all I have.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any discussion on these? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, unanimous. And the final item was the deletion of a policy because it was covered by a new pol, uh, revision to a, or a new policy that came earlier.
The school climate policy.
The school climate policy.
I made a motion for the board to approve policies five twenty-three-one, and we're only preventing intervention.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, again. Okay, committee reports, we just passed the budget in ad hoc, uh, that all had to do with this current budget to come, twenty-five, twenty-six. Negotiations, we're going to cover the, in executive session, we'll discuss the administrative assistance contract, which, um, was approved by the administrative assistance union, and we're going to vote on that tonight. Uh, school building committee, we heard the report from Mike Fianza. Uh, we had the groundbreaking today, and he gave the status updates. Uh, transportation.
I put an alarm on my calendar for the first Monday in August to contact Susan Lissard to schedule a date for a transportation committee meeting before our September meeting.
Okay, um...
I'll pick it up.
Policy, I don't think there would, we just passed the policies that were pending, um, there is nothing on the calendar until the fall.
There's upcoming meetings for the policy committee, you know that.
We canceled it because there's no model updates from shipment that even need to be discussed.
I can take that off my calendar, all right?
Okay, so we'll work it on that. Which brings us to board reports, Greg, uh, IDCS.
All right, so the report here is attached, um, for reading. I'm just going to go through the really important stuff, and we had a lot of end-of-year things happening, events going on at the school. Graduation for the seventh and eighth, for the eighth graders was this morning. That was a very well-run intent, uh, uh, event. Um, there are some changes that happened technology-wise to improve, uh, signal for internet on both the playground and the gymnasium area. Of course, I didn't do that before I left. And, uh, director Debbie Allen's performance review was completed and was overwhelmingly very positive. Going on to, first, any questions about the IDCS liaison report? Uh, the LEARN liaison report is also there included. The highlights of that are, there was a presentation on the long-term strategic plan for LEARN at this last meeting, and focused on alignment of the pathway, which they've been working on all year, um, having integration and project-based learning, um, at all of their different sites. And one of the other key points from that presentation was, um, looking into an outplacement center for infant and toddlers. Um, the budget is very strong for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, even though they did not get all of the money in this legislative session that they were hoping for, um, to the extent that was requested. And there are two graduations coming up, well, one was actually today at Three Rivers Middle College, and then tomorrow at six PM at the Guard Art Center in New London for the Marine Science Magnet Program.
I have a question about the, um, simply note, well, first of all, IDCS has spent, the kids taking the Spanish exam for NFA for credit, and they get, they all a hundred percent achieve Spanish from credit, that's wonderful.
They do Spanish from pre-K there.
Now, I, I knew they had started it, boy, you can tell, can't you? That is wonderful. But my other thing was, do our students do this Eastcon mobile manufacturing lab? That they mentioned Eastcon offers, the students in six to eight did it at IDCS. That'd be something we're checking out too.
They've been going around their spot, and they're seeing environmental, the environmental, they're just getting nice.
They learn about career pathways, manufacturing, and complete hands-on tasks.
You sent that to me?
Yeah, I think Julia...
Oh, it's on here?
Yeah, it's in the report.
It's in this report for IDCS.
So you could talk to Deb about it, she would know, but I think Julia Crumman is the one that made that connection.
Julia Crumman?
I think so.
Thank you.
It sounds awesome.
Yeah, but the environmental one, I don't know.
What about the environmental?
It was really good.
It's a good thing.
It makes it practical for elementary, but our grades too.
Okay, the NFA liaison, that's me, um, their meetings, the board is meeting, uh, tonight at the same time, so, uh... I don't have their June update from, I did attend the May meeting. Um, and in May, the major things were they're negotiating with Park Church for their parsonage to turn that into a dormitory for the foster, for the, um, kids they're bringing from overseas. And also, uh, they gave the financial report, they're finishing strong. Uh, there are going to be about a million dollars to the good on their total budget. That's mainly good to, mainly due to the, uh, to the staff, but that's what they instituted at the beginning of last year. So that was the savings.
Let's borrow some of that money.
They're putting that additional money to the capital projects that they need, you know, so...
So they might need more new brass railings on one of the buildings.
They also received from the state five point six million dollars in capital food. And...
They need it.
We, in North Pole schools, received six hundred and twelve thousand dollars for students in endowed academies.
I'm sorry, just at last.
Students enrolled in an endowed academy, I came across, so it's, it's six hundred and twelve thousand dollars to our budget, so, that moved it.
That's part of the ECS.
My husband is walking the field tomorrow, if it's not too far. It's fifty.
Is it fifty?
It's fifty, he's seventy-five.
That's why he was cool, also.
He's a choir grader anyway, so he usually sits on the stage, but it's, it's just subhot, I love that, the, you know?
Tomorrow should be a pretty good day.
I know, maybe one, but I want to be like eighty.
Yeah, that won't be too bad.
Eighty's perfect, that was how I would...
All right, and in, uh, the, at the SCF, uh, we had an election of officers. I missed the, the May meeting was the night we negotiated for the administrative assistance, um, contract. And the June meeting was delayed until the seventeenth, um, so... Which is the night of our bellhead, and so I'll probably miss that one too. Uh, but I think we had an election of officers as a new president, and we're setting ourselves up, um... We made another donation for our fund, uh, to, to get to a ten thousand dollar level. I think we're halfway there now with five thousand. So that, uh, once we hit ten thousand, we'll be permanently funded and work off interest for that through the community foundation, it's a separate entity that we send our money to, and it earns interest and pays the staff, so... That'll be good for the students. And the obvious benefits of the foundation can be seen, years ago, they, they bought instruments for the music program. The music program is, uh, well, you saw Christine, I mean, uh, but it's just amazing, every school you go into, it's, uh... The music program is just throwing leaps and bounds. Okay, the additional reports, we had, uh, they're attached to the packet, the, the year-end budget that, uh, Bob had said. Personnel reports were down to one teacher pending, and our enrollment, um, pretty much holding steady for the year. Brings us to the executive session, um...
I have a motion, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute one dash two hundred, members of the Board of Education, move to go into executive session for discussion regarding the administrative assistance contract and the superintendence contract. The board may ask Susan Lissard and Robert Sapansky to participate in some of the executive session discussion.
You got it, a second?
Second.
Uh, Heather will start.
Nine nineteen PM, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're now in executive session. Okay, it's, uh, ten thirty-two PM, and we are now out of executive session. Uh, could I have a motion to approve the, uh, as discussed in, uh, executive session, the administrative assistance contract?
I'll make a motion for the board to ratify...
I'll make a motion for the board to ratify the contract for July first, twenty twenty-five, for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight with the Norwich Educational Administrative Assistance Global thirteen oh three dash one nine zero, Council Number Four, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay, we have the first and a second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. And the second item would be a motion to extend the superintendent's contract for a one full additional year. Uh, do I have a motion for that?
This is, I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Heather. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, again unanimous. And, uh, time for, I could entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, one second.
Okay, not a debatable topic, so we're all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it is unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.